Put it out there and say, pull strike. Pull, I'll probably put it out there.
So, uh, welcome Vice Chair Wilson.
Alrighty, Mr. McNeely, I am here finally. I apologized to everyone for some technical difficulties. I always seem to join the wrong meeting.
It's the beauty of holding the study session before the hearing.
Yeah, we can work out all these issues in advance, hopefully, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, Mr. McNeely, if you are prepared, let's begin the study session with the first item on the agenda here.
Absolutely, will do. So, um, those of the members of the public, uh, who are with us this evening, um, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission's study session. It's open to the public, but not what we want to be taking public comment. I'm Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. You all should be looking at the agenda for the study session, and we are going to go through this agenda. So, first up on the agenda will be the items that are anticipated for public hearing next month at your October 29th public hearing. We have, uh, four CUP cases, and the first three are being managed by Sophie Coza with our staff. So Sophie, if you want to go ahead and share your screen and go through each of items one, two, and three scheduled for hearing next month.
Okay. So the first case is Sayers RV as a residence, CUP 2545. The owner and applicant is Michael Sayers out of La Mesa, California. The property is located at 3543 Greeley Drive in Valley, and the zoning on the property is agricultural residential with a one acre minimum parcel size, and the request is to use an RV as a permanent residence on a one and a third acre parcel in the AR1 zone. And this is a vicinity map showing the location of the subject property north of Highway 180. And this is an aerial photo of the property, as well as a site plan showing the RV towards the center of the property. And then this is a photo of the RV as well as the model specification at the bottom. And for the citizen participation plan, a virtual meeting was held by the applicant on September 3rd, where zero people attended, and staff have received no comments on the case. So with that, are there any questions?
Seeing none, we can move on to the next agenda item.
Alright, so the next case is CUP 2549 Bogart RV as a residence in metal storage containers. The owner and applicant is Troya Marcia Bogart out of Ashfork, Arizona, and the property is located at 3348 West Cumberland Road in Kai Baptist State's West. The zoning on the property is agricultural residential with a one acre minimum parcel size, and the request is to use an RV as a permanent residence and have two metal storage containers, one eight by twenty and one eight by twenty-six on a 1.29 acre parcel in the AR1 zone. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property highlighted in blue. And this is an aerial photo of the property. And then this is their site plan, which shows the RV on the southern side of the driveway, and then the two metal storage containers on the northern side of the driveway. And then these are photos of the RV as well as the metal storage containers. For their citizen participation plan, a neighborhood meeting was held on September 9th with zero people in attendance, and staff have received no comments on this case. Are there any questions?
Um, one quick one, Ms. Coza, could you go back to the overhead view of that?
Sure.
That looks different than the site plan, to me.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's rotated, and there's also this structure that I'm not sure if it is currently on the site or not. I'm not sure how old this aerial photo is.
Okay, could we make sure that, um, before next month's meeting, that the aerial is the latest, or at least we know what the delta between the aerial and actual is today?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Best, do you have a question? You're muted, Commissioner Best.
Yeah, with the, uh, storage containers, are they pretty well blocked by the trees from the roadway and the adjacent property? That would make it difficult. We're not specified by any color or anything, so they would need to be pretty invisible, or they would need to be of color.
Right, there is a lot of vegetation on the property, at least from the aerial view, but when I go into a site visit, I can definitely look into that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, perhaps a street view or two image would be helpful. Commissioner Leslie, go ahead.
Can I get the case number repeated, please, on that one, on this one?
Yes, it is CUP 2549.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I see no other hands raised, so we can go ahead and move on to the next agenda item.
Alright, so this is CUP 2551 Combs Metal Storage Containers. And the owner is Combs and Watson Last Resort Living Trust out of Williams, and the applicant is Donald Combs, also out of Williams. The property is located at 5225 North Cataract Drive in Red Lake, and the zoning is agricultural residential with a one acre minimum parcel size, and the request is for two eight by forty metal storage containers on a 1.07 acre parcel in the AR1 zone. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property west of Highway 64. And this is an aerial photo of the property. And this is their site plan, so they're proposing the shipping containers towards the rear of the property. And then this is a photo they submitted of one of the metal storage containers showing the color. And for their citizen participation plan, they held a meeting on September 2nd where four people were in attendance, none of whom had any concerns, and staff have received no comments. So with that, are there any questions?
Wish your best, go ahead.
Could you show the plan again, please?
Yep.
So, um, it's a little confusing. Are they planning to build a house? Is this some sort of commercial storage? And the same question about, uh, visibility from adjacent properties and the possible need to paint these things.
Yeah, so the applicant did mention in the future potentially turning this into some kind of barn structure, but right now they're just planning on using it for storage.
Okay. And so the same question about, uh, visibility from adjacent properties and possible color.
Right, so I'll definitely look into that when I do the site visit. Um, it does look like there's some trees around, but we could definitely condition additional screening and changing the color.
Thank you.
Ms. Coza, when you do your site visit, if you could also verify that the trees that we're seeing here would not be impacted, since they would be likely to be a significant part of the blocking that Commissioner Best was just talking about?
Okay, will do.
And also make sure that they understand that this is residential, that you should be residential. It, it just looks a little strange. It doesn't look real homie. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Your hand is still raised. Any other questions on this case? Seeing none, we should move on.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson, members of the commission. This case is the Valley Canyon Water CUP, and CUP 2552. In this case, the property owner is the Collins family out of, uh, Williams, Arizona, or out of Valley. Advocate is Rob Baldowski, also from Valley, and the property is on Highgro Road in Valley. The zoning is general, tenement minimum parcel size, and the site size is 3.6 acre portion of a 40.88 acre parcel. And this is the request, it's a renewal of CUP 07061 for water tanks. That's considered to be a utility facility according to the definitions in the zoning ordinance. And, uh, on top of the renewal is also modifications to allow an expansion of the facility within additional water tank stand pipes and commercial water delivery. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. This is Highway 64, kind of moving out of the valley area, and it's right on the corner of Highgro. This is Highgro going this way. This is a zoning map showing the surrounding zoning. You can see the valley subdivisions to the south in the AR1 zone. This is commercial zone down here in the red, and this is the G-zone, and this is the new MHP zone that was just approved a couple of years ago. There's an arrow photo showing the subject property. You can see the existing water tank on the property. The other one would go right next to it, and then some other facilities here. This is apparently runoff from the tanks. There's a, there's a well on the property, a deep well. Uh, so these tanks are for to take the runoff and to use for other purposes. I'll talk about it in a second. Okay, this is, um, uh, some background on the property and also the proposal. The well was, uh, established in 1994, basically to serve the businesses, commercial businesses in Valley, and also water hauling business. In 2007, uh, CPO 7061 approved this tank, and that's the exact size it shows in the uh, CUP, although, uh, the applicant refers to it as a 500,000 gallon tank. In 2017, the CUP expired without being renewed. So the current request is to install, uh, a new 500,000 gallon water tank, um, install commercial truck stand pipes and water distribution infrastructure, and also allow commercial water sales from the property, including the parking of, uh, commercial water hauling trucks. This is a site plan showing the property. So again, you can see this is the existing roughly 500,000 gallon tank. This is, uh, another, the new one they're proposing. This is the stand pipe that would have potable water to be, uh, to, to go on the trucks and go out into the community to be sold in the community. And then over here next to this stock tank, uh, there is a non-potable, uh, pipe, I guess, for emergency services, wildlife conservancy, and rancher truck fill. So for different non-potable uses, including watering wildlife. And this is a nice rendering to show how the tanks would look on the site, and also the water trucks and water and trucks taking water out of the stock ponds and the buildings on the site. With that, are there any questions from the commission?
Not seeing any, so I'll have to ask one. The access to this site will be from 64 or from the theater road there?
It would be from, uh, Highgro Road, which is, which comes right off of the 64.
Is that a paper?
It's not paved. It has been improved because of some campgrounds on the property. Like this is, uh, Clear Skies, the campground. So it's been improved to support the 42,000 pound public safety vehicle from this, from here all the way down to this, uh, campground right here. Uh, so it does provide access and a, and a good road, good solid road.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, let's move ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. Um, that gets us up to our department update, and Melissa Shaw, Long Range Planner, can just, can, um, update you on the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan.
Thank you, Jess. Commissioners, um, good afternoon, and, um, so the, um, Flagstaff Regional Land is planned, as you can see on the screen. First, public hearing with the, the City Flagstaff Planning, Planning and Zoning Commission was held on September 10th. And the second one is tonight, um, beginning, it began at four o'clock PM. That tonight's hearing is a continuation of the September 10th hearing. Their, their city code requires two public hearings on this type of update to the Flagstaff Regional Plan. So, um, the, there are a fair number of comments that have been received. I think, um, close to 150 comments have been received on, um, the public hearing draft for the regional plan, which, um, city staff has been working through to present to the Planning Commission, um, the city's Planning and Zoning Commission. So we'll know more tomorrow about how that is, has turned out, um, and what their recommendation is going forward. The, um, the City Council Public Hearing is scheduled for October 9th, um, beginning of 4:00 PM. October 9th is a, um, a Thursday evening. So that will be in the evening if anyone is interested in attending that. And then, as we've been mentioning, um, for a while now, we, we plan on bringing the regional plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission, to the County Planning and Zoning Commission, once, um, the county has gone through the process of adopting the, the updated comprehensive plan. So, um, any questions on that?
You just said that you're planning on bringing it after the county has approved it, or after the city has approved it?
After the county has finished the, um, adopting the county's comprehensive plan. So, once we're through with the comprehensive plan update process, then we'll bring the regional plan to the commission and the board to consider for adoption as an amendment to the, the newly adopted comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like Commissioner Best has a question. Please go ahead, sir.
Will there be, uh, a new document put out after the Planning and Zoning Commission hears it, and I guess it would be, be the document going to City Council. Will, will that go out and be available for comment?
I believe it will be the same document that the, the City Council will receive, the same document that the Planning and Zoning Commission has, um, been, been reviewing. Uh, they'll just keep track of all the comments, and then the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the City Council on any potential changes. So there's a, yeah, there's a, an extensive tracking sheet with all the comments and then recommendations for how to, how that will be moved forward.
And will that be available?
Yes, that's, I, I mean, it is available, um.
And it should probably change tonight because they're meeting again, so.
It, it will be updated after tonight's hearing. But I can, I can make sure that if anyone is interested, that you get a copy of all those new meeting links and staff report to the City Council.
Yes, I am interested. Thank you.
Okay.
I would be too, Melissa. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Ms. Shaw, so it sounds like we had a hearing, we generated 150 comments, we could get another 150 tonight. So there could be 300 proposed or requested changes to this document that the City Council is going to see. Um, and the Planning and Zoning Commission will have already forwarded it without adjudicating those 300 comments. Is that correct?
Um, well, let me actually clarify that then. So the, the planning, the City Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, second hearing is again tonight. Tonight, they're reviewing, it was up until earlier this afternoon that I looked, and there were over 150 comments that have been submitted in writing that the Planning Commission will review. They reviewed quite a few during the September 10th meeting. So they're adding to the list, and I don't know how many new were added since the September 10th hearing, but this, that's a continuation. So there could be some additional comments read into the record tonight during the public comment period. Um, I, I would be surprised if it reached the 300.
Well, the number isn't so important as the process.
Right, but they, they will be making a recommendation on all the comments that are submitted as of today and tonight.
The city's planning and zoning commission will.
That's right.
Before the City Council. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sorry, Stephen. I think it's also important to note that, you know, this is a process that's been going on for close to two years at this point, right? So, um, you know, I, I think calling it, right, like a public hearing is a little bit of a misnomer in a sense, right? That, you know, we've had folks at the city who have been doing really, a really, really good job, um, on outreach for, you know, months and months and months at this point, right? And then this is kind of just the, this is the culmination of that, right? And the, the legally required hearing, right, that, that has to happen due, due to state law. So, I mean, I would say, um, I, I've been really impressed with what a good job, um, you know, Sarah Decta in particular, this city has done with, with the outreach. Um, and especially, I think, also making sure that she, she's gotten out of her way to reach out to members and groups in the community that wouldn't otherwise, um, you know, tend to be involved in these sort of processes. Um, you know, not just loud mouths like me who will stick their nose into anything and, uh, make sure they're heard. So, um, I just want to bring that up.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayward. Um, Ms. Shaw, one last question then. So, City Council on 9 October will approve the plan at that point, or they're still making changes at that point?
Well, both of those options are possible. They could approve it as recommended by their Planning and Zoning Commission. They could make additional changes at that time, or they could make another recommendation to possibly continue that, that public hearing, so.
Okay. So, then the reason I'm asking that question is, when, when we get the document for review, will, will there be any potential change to it after that?
Well, one, once the city has approved the regional plan, then, and then, um, rec- remember then that that document will need to be on a ballot for people that live within the City of Flagstaff, for a voter approval version. However, for the county, we don't have that requirement. So once that comes to the planning, this county's Planning and Zoning Commission and the county's Board of Supervisors, there is an opportunity there for the county to, to make changes to a county version. Ideally, we'll, we'll be adopting the same document. Um, you know, we've been involved at the county level throughout the entire process of the regional plan update, so, um, yeah, that, but there is always that opportunity to, for additional comment at your hearing.
Well, I, I was more concerned that it wasn't going to be changing after we had seen it.
Um, the only possible change would be is if, um, in May, when the ballot measure is out and people, and this the city residents vote on it, if for some reason it is not voter approved, then it will go back again through that public hearing process. But that, that's, yeah, that's a whole nother question at that point. But no, once the city, or see that you'll get the same document.
Any questions from any other commissioners? Check my other page here. Nobody. Alright, thank you very much. Mr. McNeely?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. So the next item, item two on your department update is actually scheduled to come to you for hearing, um, on next month's, uh, October 29th public hearing. So this is the ADU discussion that we've had several times now. Um, I just wanted to do a quick overview with it for, uh, for the commissioners that we have here. Um, as you remember, yeah, we've discussed that state law is increasing the number of ADUs that are, um, permitted on a property. That requires the county to update our zoning ordinance to accurately reflect that um, on properties that are under one acre in size. They will be able to have one attached ADU and one detached ADU, and then on properties over one acre in size, uh, they can have two detached ADUs and the one eight attached ADU. And the real question that we've, that we've pondered, and we got some really good feedback, so I can kind of go over, over the feedback that we got from you all, is whether to require that second detached ADU to be deed restricted for affordable housing. Um, and that definition is being rented to households under 80% of the area median income for not more than 30% of their, of the, of the renters' gross income. Uh, we've discussed the pros and the cons. Uh, the pros, you know, that would really align with, um, with our comprehensive plan and, and, and and also with our, um, with our proposed updated comprehensive plan is just pointing out that the community needs affordable housing, and a big plus, um, in many community members' eyes would be that, that this would limit uh, that, that second detached ADU from being able to be used as a short-term rental, uh, AKA an Airbnb. Um, the cons, we all know, would be difficult to administer. Uh, that would be our department, uh, partnering with HHS, the Health and Human Services Department, to income-qualify people, and then we would be working, uh, when we permit that second detached ADU, uh, to have a deed restriction recorded against it, um, that it's, um, that it is deed restricted for affordable housing, and that would cause us, uh, to go into a reporting mechanism, um, and a, and just tracking. Um, we, we all, we've all acknowledged that, um, uh, the probability, uh, of these, of this second detached ADU, if it's deed restricted, uh, may be pretty low. It may be in, you know, just could count on one hand in a year how many would actually come forward. Um, we won't know until it happens. I did appreciate the, the feedback we got from the commission last month in that, hey, this, this could squelch, uh, this could be a chilling effect on more housing in the county, um, and that it would be tough for staff to administer. Um, that we heard that from the commission. We also heard from the commission that, hey, this is a, um, this is a tool. This is something we've been granted, um, from, uh, the state legislature, and, uh, maybe we could take advantage of it, knowing our needs, uh, knowing the impacts of short-term rentals on neighborhoods, and knowing, um, our need for affordable housing. As staff, we would point out, um, you can start out heavy on legislation, um, at the, at the county level, in the county zoning ordinance, and you can always back off, but you can never go the opposite direction. Um, so this is something that I think when we kind of count up the comments that we got from the commission last month, it sounds like the majority of the commissioners are supportive of going with the deed restriction. Um, as, as staff, um, our recommendation would be like that, that is, is not a bad, um, direction to go, even though it increases our workload if and when, um, uh, one of these deed-restricted ADUs come forward. Um, and if we see, and we get feedback from the community, uh, and this will be a public hearing, obviously, uh, for the zoning ordinance amendment with you all and with the Board of Supervisors. If we get feedback from the community of like, hey, this, this isn't helping, um, and we can always back off in our zoning ordinance and remove that, uh, that limitation, that's something we could always, um, we could always do in the future. So, um, with that, we would like to bring this to you next month. I would like to point out that we have a, um, a draft available that will be in your packet. Um, so we have the classic, um, strikeout and, uh, and underline for what is being um, removed out of our zoning ordinance in a zoning ordinance amendment and what is being added. Um, removed out of our zoning ordinance in a zoning ordinance amendment and what is being added. Um, and this will be in your packet uh on your public hearing agenda packet for next month. Um, the key would be what I'm what I'm highlighting right here. Um, in in the numbers. Of uh of ADUs um. In increasing the additional detached accessory dwelling unit for all residential zone lots and then for lots over one acre in size. The second detached accessory dwelling, if the second detached accessory dwelling is deed restricted as an affordable housing. You see, that's bolded, so we've added um the necessary definitions into um into the draft code update as well. With that, I would be happy, uh Vice Chair Wilson, to take any any additional comments from the uh from the commissioners and any questions.
Mr. McNeely, I would ask that when you do provide this for review. That you um differentiate between those changes that are required as a result of state law. And those changes that we have a decision to make about. With respect to this ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Clearly delineated. And if you could go back real quick just to your slide of cons and pros and cons. And Commissioner Best, I see you. You're next. Um, on cons, um. I think it would be important to note that this is also infringing on a property owner's um rights or choices to do with their property as they please. Which um a lot of people have pretty strong opinions and feelings about. So I I I don't know that your pros and cons list is as extensive or detailed as it could be. But I think that would be an important one to include. And Commissioner Best, please go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um. First question and. Probably don't have an answer now, but the the city is a lot more um. Involved in this than we are and has been for a long time. And I wonder with this and our whole housing effort. Whether we could partner with the city and come up with a a lot of efficiency. So when you, when you consider creating a whole. New office that has to go out and knock on doors and check on uh affordable housing, let's see what the city does and see if we can partner with them. And this, the second thing is, uh, might sound silly, but I think it's really important. Uh, that's a washer dryer. Uh, the city's. ADU designs. I got there a little late. They don't include a washer dryer. So if you're building an ADU for grandpa. Uh, maybe you figure he's going to wash in the house and you go and install one. But then if that property changes hands and you want to use it for a rental, which we hope happens. The difference between. First of all, installing it uh. When it's built is probably a few hundred bucks and it and installing it after it's built is probably a few thousand bucks. And the difference between a rental with or without a washer dryer is huge. Especially in these tiny properties where, you know, it needs to go just in exactly the right place. Because there's just no room in them. Uh, so I would suggest strongly that um. I have a funny feeling the designs from the city will end up with us just because they're done in its most efficient way, but let's. Let's try and get washer dryers out there, uh, because they make rentals. A lot more realistic. I mean, the difference between washing your clothes in your house and having to spend two hours a week in a laundry mat is huge.
Absolutely. So and um. Commissioner Best, what what I would add to that, just for the adification of the other, the other commissioners on the meeting. What you're referring to is the city's model ADU um program where they've approved, they've pre-approved some designs. Um, for ADUs and 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 I I know exactly what you're talking about in those model ADUs did not include. Um, washers and dryers, and we are looking to partner with the city on those same model ADUs. And I certainly hear you loud and clear, and I I completely, you know, staff would completely concur with you. Uh, so if we if we can get some of the model plan, if if we go the route of having model plan ADUs available, and that's just a benefit. To whoever, you know, would choose to use the um model plans um to uh to develop an ADU. Um, we will certainly um. Move forward with that, and our sustainable building manager, uh, uh, sustainable building program manager Nina Schmidt. She's fully aware of that concern as well. So so we will, we will work with that technical issue, um if and when we move forward on the uh. The model plan ADU incentive program.
Yeah, I did communicate with Nina. I just got there too late. For the city. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Berger.
Uh, the other thing to think about, and thank you, Commissioner Best, that was one idea, but then. If we're in the county, a lot of these folks are going to be going on solar. Um. So do we have an idea or are we coming up with a solid plan for um off grid? Um, type of units or that just going to be a given, or has there been any any discussion to that effect?
That's a great question. Um, we do a significant number of off grid dwellings and ADUs already. So um we have made uh solar permitting as simple uh um as possible. And there's actually movement at the state legislature to um. Uh, to improve efficiency of solar permitting as well. Um, but yeah, that's that's certainly. A consideration. And um I I would tell you that our permitting process already makes it um. Uh, pretty simple at out of necessity, because we do permit a lot of homes and ADUs that are um. That are off grid, they're using solar and backup generators.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Any other commissioners have any questions or discussion on this topic? Seeing none. Mr. McNeely, let's move ahead.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. Um, next on your study session agenda. Uh, we have Jessica Simmons, our wildlife planner with us, and she is going to give you a session on. Uh, the topic is wildlife friendly fencing, but she uh she's keep making it much broader for wildlife corridors. So go ahead, Jessica.
Yeah, thank you everyone so much for your time today. I am Jessica, your county wildlife planner. So I wanted to talk to the commission today about. Uh, wildlife corridors, because it's something I bring up a lot in the discussion of cases uh that we look at. That I mentioned protecting wildlife quarters. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knows what is so important about them, so we're all on the same page. So all animals need to move at least somewhat at different times of their life, even a sponge. And these can be movements that happen one time in the animal's life. For example, young animals dispersing from the family unit. These can be daily movements between, for example, bedding and feeding areas. There, they can be seasonal migrations that move with the weather. They can be movements where animals are trying to find a mate. Or they can be movements to escape disturbances that are unexpected, such as unusual weather. Habitat destruction, noise disturbance, a fire, or climate change. And plants depend on wildlife corridors too, because they need access to their pollinators and for seed dispersal. So we need to protect habitat blocks and movement quarters, and the bigger the better. Different animals have different barriers to movement. For example, a fence might be a barrier to a deer, but not an eagle. And parents teach their offspring what paths to take and areas to use and what, when to do that. And we're not talking just about physical habitat, but also noise disturbance can make suitable habitat unsuitable. For example. If there is a forest that is being used by spotted owls and then a sawmill goes in that is operating all day long, year round. Even though no trees have been cut down or the habitat otherwise modified, that habitat would then be unsuitable for spotted owls. And. These, this is a picture here of mapped wildlife corridors in the Flagstaff area, which I'll come back and talk to about a little bit more. And we want to make sure when we are making new developments that we don't block the movements of animals that use these corridors. Because even if the habitat still exists on the other side of the blockage, if it's not accessible, it's not useful. And if you think of the example of. If you have a one hundred acre cow pasture. And then you build a fence down the middle of it, even though. There's great pasture on the other side of your fence, you, if your cows can't get to it, then it's no use to anybody. So. Wildlife has to be able to move from one pe- patch of habitat to another. So what happens when habitat is blocked? Young animals can become separated from their parents. For example, if a deer jumps over a fence. But her baby who's following her can't get past the fence, then they're going to get separated, and that has obvious. Randomizations for population dynamics. If a pop, if animals can't move from one area to another, this can restrict gene flow and isolate populations, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. If a patch of habitat is smaller, that just decreases the ability of an animal to find food and mates and to escape disturbance, just because it's in a smaller area. And when animals can't meet life needs and make those kind of adjustments, that makes it that much more likely that a population can just disappear. Another consequence is when habitat becomes unsuitable, that sometimes pushes animals into areas where humans are, into towns and cities. And this can result in human wildlife conflicts. For example, if it's a prey species, they can bring their predators into towns. It can force animals to cross roads where they can be hit by vehicles. There can be possible aggressive encounters between animals and wildlife, and there can be property destruction. And I just wanted to show one example mainly because this photo is so funny. This is from a few years ago in Colorado, a bear wandered on to a university campus and climbed a tree. And people were kind of worried about what it was going to do, but it was, did not come down from that tree. And so these wildlife officers. Showed up and they tranquilized the bear and they set up mats, so when the bear fell out of the tree, they safely caught the bear and relocated it. And this is just one example of wildlife, human uh conflicts that can arise when habitat becomes unsuitable. So this is a very interesting map that looks at barriers and habitat fragmentation. If you look at this map, these different colored dots are locations of different collared pronghorn animals. So as you can see, if you look at where they move around in respect to where the highways are. You can see that no pronghorn are crossing the highways. And this can really have a negative effect on populations when they are not free to move around the landscape, because as you can imagine. Before those highways were built, those animals probably wandered over bigger areas. So when habitat is cut off by barriers, in this case highways. It decreases the amount of habitat they have available, and it limit, it limits their ability to escape disturbance. And it results in genetic isolation and lack of gene flow, and this results in less fit individuals, because you start getting more inbreeding. And you don't get introduction of new genes into the population. Another result that I'll mention, this is a bird called a brown headed cowbird. And the habitat of this bird is along the edges of forests. And this, the brown headed cowbird is a nest parasite. So what it does is find the nests of other bird species. And it pushes one or more of the eggs out and it replaces them with its own eggs. And so what happens is you have these other bird species raising these cowbird chicks. The, so the host baby, the host bird raises the baby cowbirds as its own, which uses up the host parent's energy. And it deprives its own young of resources since the cowbird chick hatches earlier and is bigger and more aggressive about food. So since brown headed cowbirds live on the edges of forests. Birds that lay, that build their nest deep into a large forest patch are safe from cowbirds. But when a large patch of forest is fragmented, for example, by the building of roads. You create more habitat for the brown headed cowbird and more and more nests of other bird species are vulnerable to being parasitized. So these are just some examples of why it's important to protect large connected blocks of habitat, including known movement corridors. So what can we do as the planning and zoning commission and the county? So here again is that same map I showed before. We're really fortunate that we have these corridors mapped through an effort by game and fish. So that we can help protect movement corridors in our planning efforts. We need to protect habitat blocks and movement corridors, and the bigger the better. And we need to remember that it's not just a physical habitat, but also we need to think about disturbance. So when the commission has a proposed project within one of these corridors. We can look at what's proposed, see what type of project it is. Look at which species use the corridor and what their habitat needs are, and a lot of times we can implement adjustments to the project. So animals can still pass through. And another thing I talk about a lot is, this is a diagram of wildlife friendly fencing, which is fencing. That wildlife can pass over without getting entangled. So what makes this? Uh, fence friendly to wildlife is a few things. One is the height. It's no taller than forty two inches in height so that animals can jump over. And then there's this gap. Down here below the lowest wire, and we want this to be a bigger gap so that young animals can follow their parents. And so the pronghorn can pass, because they like to pass under fences. They don't jump over. And then another thing is this gap here. This is, uh, we want this to be twelve inches or more from the first wire to the second. Because if you picture a deer jumping over this fence, if it's a smaller gap, its leg can get caught between the two wires on the way over. And then those wires can twist together and the animal gets trapped in the fence. So this is something we have required from a lot of applicants who have projects. That come through the commission and that are planning on building new fencing. And this type of fencing also still excludes livestock, so it's a really, really good win win. So just because this is kind of interesting, I, this is a picture of. One of very many wildlife over crossings, just like the one that's being built down south of Mon's Park, if any of you have driven down there lately. So this is in Banff National Park, and they have a lot of these over the highway. And you can see that if you think about that pronghorn map, for example. The animals on one side of the highway are able to cross over to the other side of the highway, so that the highway does not become a barrier. And cause all those problems that I mentioned earlier. And there can also be underpasses. Here's a cool picture of one of those. And that's all I had tonight.
Ms. Simmons, I have a quick question. The um wildlife friendly fencing is not what the National Forest Service uses to fence in their forests. Is there a reason why?
I have not talked to them about that, so I don't know their reasoning.
I, I'm I'm looking at one from where I'm sitting right now, and it's all barbed wire, and they're closer together than that.
Yeah, I see a lot of wildlife unfriendly fencing out there.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Jessica, and uh. Boy, I'd love to sit down with you sometimes, because I I have a lot of confusion. I'm on the. North side of Buffalo Park, between Buffalo Park and and now I'm Eldon, and I get elk. Coming through every fall. I just wonder where the heck they go, because they come through and they don't come back. It'd be fascinating to see your maps. And um, this is really great that we're talking about this today, because I have a a a point and request. Uh, later in the evening when we look at the comprehensive plan, uh, just the fact that uh. We can make one phone call. To Jessica. Uh, and she's pretty smart. But she doesn't know everything, but she knows who to call to answer really any wildlife question. Based on. Generations of data and study. And experts. Uh. And uh, I will point out later this evening that we don't have that with plants. And that no wildlife exists in Arizona without plants. So. Uh, that's for later time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Any other questions for Ms. Simmons?
Yeah, I'll just jump in. Jessica, that, the maps that you showed us, what, where could we find those if we wanted to look at them in more detail?
If you're talking about this one of the wildlife quarter, you can go to the Arizona Game and Fish. It's called the Environmental Review Tool. And you can just Google that, Environmental Review Tool. It is a great website. It has an uh, an interactive map. And um, you can pull up all kinds of things on that map besides just these wildlife corridors. It shows um. Habitat modeling for all different kinds of species. You can see where uh prairie dogs are likely or unlikely, or all different kinds of animals. It has um critical habitat, so it's a very, very cool website for uh wildlife and natural resources, the Environmental Review Tool.
Cool, I found it. Thank you. Cool. I found it. Thank you.
Cool.
Any other questions from Simmons? All right, Mr. McNeely, let's give us a board of supervisors update.
Absolutely. So wanted to let you know that last night the board heard the Diablo Canyon subdivision. That was the, um, cluster conservation subdivision, uh, near, um, Mormon Lake that the commission recommended approval of. They approved that last night. So that is now approved. The McLean Meadows Arcana, um, mixed-use development in Valley, that would be a zone change to resort commercial and manufactured home park and a subdivision preliminary plat. That hearing is scheduled for the board on October fourteenth. Um, and as you know, with the comprehensive plan update, uh, you have your public hearing this evening on the comprehensive plan update. Um, we will have another work session with the board of supervisors following your hearing, um, next week, October seventh. Um, and then the board's public hearing on the comprehensive plan is scheduled at this time for, I believe, November eighteenth. Any questions on board supervisor actions or hearings?
Seeing none, we will move on to commission and staff roundtable. Any commissioners have an item they would like to discuss at this opportunity? Seeing none. Do we have any staff discussion necessary? And congratulations, we all, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McNeely.
Oh, Vice Chair Wilson, um, um, we can let Commissioner Best, uh, speak, but no, nothing, nothing from staff on roundtable. We've hit, we've hit all the issues, uh, all the way around that staff has.
Thank you. Commissioner Best?
Uh, thank you. I, I, I went to a supervisor's meeting and I was wondering how skinny the chairs would have to be for us to reclaim our old territory. Uh, it sure was great to have human-to-human contact. Uh, not that I don't love to see all your faces, but, um, I wonder if we're making any progress on being able to meet in person. And, and I'm looking, I'm seriously looking for chairs. I'm going to take some chairs over there. I'll probably be arrested.
Mr. McNeely, any updates?
Yeah, so there's, there's no updates. Um, still the same, the same issues we've had. Um, the facilities department has recently updated their facilities master plan, which does include, um, long-term moving around multiple facilities, including our departments. And that would include a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, um, room. But, um, the timing of the facilities master plan is, it's a facilities master plan. It's into the future based on funding. So there's no timing date, um, for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions, issues? Then I would like to congratulate you all on having a chance to get something to eat before we reconvene at five thirty. See you all then.
Thank you. See you in a bit.
So your hearing doesn't start till five thirty?
Hmm.
Um.
When it comes on, so when it comes like.
Hi, this is Jess with the, Jess McNeely with Community Development Department Staff. So if you're joining us from the public, um, the chair will be starting the meeting here in about three minutes at five thirty. Uh, if you could please mute your, your mics and turn your cameras off. Um, and then when the chair caught, makes a call to public for, um, uh, for public comment, then you'll be free to, uh, to join the meeting and speak then. Thanks a lot.
Mr. McNeely, did we have a quorum at the work session?
Vice Chair Wilson, yes, we do have a court, we did have a quorum at the work session. Believe, uh, Sheila Walsh, Commissioner Walsh, joined us a little late. Uh, the only commissioner that was not with us, um, that we didn't, uh, anticipate being absent was Commissioner Williams.
Okay.
And I'm looking to see.
Right now I'm receiving messages saying if executive session, if necessary, meeting invites. I'm not sure why that's happening. Sheila, did you have something to share?
Hi, I joined by phone while I was trying to figure out how to get on Teams. And I think I've solved my Teams problem, so I joined by Teams and canceled the phone. So I was here at four o'clock.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Okay, it is five thirty on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and I will call this meeting to order of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, Mr. McNeely, you have confirmed we do have a quorum. Is that correct?
Uh, Vice Chair Wilson, yes, we do have a quorum. We have all of the commissioners with us other than, uh, Chair, um, Burton, Burton, who we did not anticipate, and we do not have, as of right now, we do not have, um, Commissioner Williams with us. I just jumped over to that, um, executive session that we created, just to make sure she didn't accidentally go to the executive session. And there's no one in the executive session. So, um, we do have a quorum.
She was on there, Jess, and I told her to come to this link. So hopefully she's got that link.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, so Vice Chair Wilson, we do have a quorum. So anytime you're ready, we can, uh, we can initiate your hearing.
All right, we have officially begun the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. On behalf of the commissioners here tonight, I would like to welcome everyone to our September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Tonight, we'll be hearing the cases and the order presented on the agenda. Cases will be heard as follows. The Coconino County Planning Staff will present it over you with the project. Next, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you understand and agree with the staff conditions, we need to hear that from you. Please feel free to keep your comments brief. We're sure all relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call for any public comment. If anyone wishes to address the case, they should raise their hand and to indicate so. When called on, please state your name and address. Comments will be limited to no more than three minutes in length. Mr. McNeely will be our timekeeper. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. Generally, the commission cannot interact directly back with you, but we are listening. We trust that all comments will be respectful. After the public comments have been completed, we will close open discussion and begin discussion amongst the commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Coconino County Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the board of supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have fifteen days to appeal. Please contact the Community Development Office for the appeal procedures. Due to virtual nature of this meeting, a roll call vote of commissioners will be conducted to ensure accuracy and for the record. We ask that guests mute their microphones and turn off their cameras. Additionally, the message function on this platform is for communicating technical difficulties only. It cannot and should not be used for any other discussions. Thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in your county planning. The first item on our agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. McNeely, if you would, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda today is approval of the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five minutes. Um, I have one minor, well, actually two minor corrections on page eight, item number three. Um, there are two examples of, um, Deputy County Attorney Angela Lane being kind of misnamed there. So if those two instances could be corrected, then I am open for any other comments or corrections on the minutes from the commissioners. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections as listed. Come on, somebody.
What, what was the date?
August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
I move that we approve the minutes from August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. And a second?
I second. This is Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Best and a second from Commissioner Walsh to approve the minutes. I will call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Tohe?
Here.
Uh, do you care to vote? Uh, yes or no?
Sorry, I thought we were doing roll call. Um, I.
Hi, Commissioner Walsh.
Hi.
Commissioner Williams? Maybe not back with us yet? Commissioner Best?
Hi.
Fisher Burger?
Hi.
Commissioner Leslie?
Obstane?
And Fisher Hayward?
Hi.
And I too vote I. The commission, or the motion passes. Which brings us to item number three, which is an open call to the public to, for comments not relating to anything on tonight's agenda. So if there are any members of the public here this evening that would like to share a comment with us not relating to an agenda item, this is your opportunity to raise your hand and be heard. I'm seeing none. So will we move, we will move on then to the public hearing portion of this evening. CUP twenty-five dash zero two seven and CUP twenty-five zero four zero are both RVs for permanent, um, dwelling on land. And in the past, we have passed those as a consent agenda item. Uh, is there anyone here from the public that would make a comment, would like to make a comment on either CUP twenty-five zero two seven or twenty-five zero four zero? All right, I'm seeing Craig and Barker Vogel. You are recognized. You have three minutes to share your thoughts. Please do.
Good evening. I had previously submitted, um, an opposition letter. I don't know if you have it, but I'd like to read it to you. It shouldn't take more than three minutes. Um, we're expressing our opposition to this request. We purchased property in Junipina Estates in two thousand sixteen and have built a beautiful home. We currently pay almost four thousand a year in property taxes to Coconino County. We've seen some nice manufactured homes as well as stick-built homes added to the neighborhood. Our concern with this request is that it will set a precedent in the neighborhood. These individuals do not contribute to the tax base as of paying taxes on raw land. It's also of concern there are no utilities or septic system at this property and no plans to add one. We have no reassurance that these individuals will properly dispose of waste. Junipina Estates elected to abolish its CCNRs because the county codes were more strict. There are now several Graceland buildings in the neighborhood that have power and water, but the owners have not pulled permits. These owners are paying taxes on raw land and not contributing to the tax space. Allowing RVs as permanent residents will allow this trend to continue and ultimately affect property values in the neighborhood. We want our neighborhood to remain Junipina Estates, not Junipine RV Park.
Thank you very much. I apologize. I should have asked you to state your name and address for us in the beginning. If you could do that now, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, it's Barbara Vogel, V O G E L. My address is seven zero six two North Pinion Pine Street, Williams, Arizona, eight six zero four six.
Thank you very much. And that comment was relating to CUP zero or twenty-five zero two seven or twenty-five zero four zero?
Zero four zero. I'm sorry, I should have specified.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on either of these two CUPs? Um, and Ms. Vogel, you could probably drop your, lower your hand now so that we get a clear screen here. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public comments, I will open it to the commission for discussion amongst ourselves. Do any commissioners have any questions or discussion they would like to have on either of these two CUPs? Fisher Burger? You're muted?
Got that. Um, so lots are taxed on either raw or developed land, so I'm not sure what the question is or what the comment was regarding the taxes that they're not paying.
Okay. So I, I guess the question would be, and perhaps staff can help us with this. Um, if you place an RV on a lot, is that still raw land or is that now considered developed?
So, um, Vice Chair Wilson, we, we would need to confirm with the assessor's office. That is, that is not one of the considerations that staff uses for analysis or one of the findings to approve a, um, conditional use permit or zone change. Um, there is documentation of permits when in, when an RV is permitted on a property. Um, but, uh, that is not a consideration that staff has, has analyzed before, and, and we don't have that information readily available to us right now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other members of the commission that would like to share a thought or a question? Since these are two different, and we did get a public comment, I'm going to conduct two different, um, or I would, I would like to have a motion for each individually. So if someone could make a motion for CUP twenty-five dash zero two seven?
This is Commissioner Hayward. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, case number CUP twenty-five dash zero two seven.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayward, I need a second. Commissioner Walsh, I heard you second that, so I have a motion by Commissioner Hayward and a second by Commissioner Walsh to approve CUP twenty-five dash zero two seven. I'll take a vote, a roll call vote here. Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh? Commissioner Walsh, you're muted?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams? Is she here yet? Okay. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
And I vote I. The motion passes and I now need a motion for CUP twenty five dash zero four zero.
I will also make a motion to approve CUP twenty five dash zero four zero, Commissioner Hayward.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayward. And a second?
I'll make the second.
I will second that.
I think I heard Commissioner Burger first, so we will go with that. I have a motion from Commissioner Hayward and a second from Commissioner Burger to approve CUP twenty five dash zero four zero as presented. And take a roll call vote. Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Best?
Hi.
Commissioner Burger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
And I vote I. The motion passes as moved. Our next item is CUP twenty five dash zero one seven, a fuel island. Mr. McNeely, is staff paired on this one? Looks like it.
Vice Chair Wilson, yes, Bob Short with our staff is managing this case. He already has his screen shared, so Bob, if you want to go ahead and give the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. This case is the Gilligan's Fuel Island CUP and CUP twenty five seventeen. And in this case, the property owner is Sandy Desert Forest Lakes LLC of Scottsdale. The applicant is John Gilligan of Prescott Valley. The location is twenty nine ninety eight State Route two sixty in Forest Lakes and the zoning is CG ten thousand. The property size is one acre and the request is installation of a fuel island and that requires the CUP in the CG ten thousand zone. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see the subject property is just south of the two sixty as you come into Forest Lakes. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. This is the, the original store, an existing store. They spent there for quite some time. And the fuel island would be in this area right here. As I mentioned last month, most of these trees have been removed to make space for the fuel island. And this is the site plan and note that actually this is a little bit confusing with the property line. Runs around this spring loop and back to here. So this is not the property line right here. It runs around Spring Loop. Again, this is the existing store on the site. This is the location proposed for the fuel island. You can see that the circulation would come in and out from both the west and east entrances off of State Route two sixty. That would be the circulation pattern for this. So this is the proposal and a little background as well. The proposal is to install a fuel island at the location of an existing retail store that was constructed in nineteen seventy three. So the store's been there for quite some time. The applicant's also asking for a landscape waiver to allow the existing trees on the site and also trees in the national forest to meet the landscape requirements. The applicant's also asking for a sign waiver to allow modified signage on the fuel canopy. And I did want to note, this is part of the building permit process, but an encroaching permit will be required from ADOT to address any impacts to State Route two sixty and that would also be required from the county because that is the county maintained road that is on that, that cul-de-sac. This is the sign waiver details. So the applicant's asking for one seven point three six square foot sign with the name of the business and one eight point five five square foot sign with the price of, of fuel. Both signs would be on the same side of the canopy and that would be facing the highway, so they're most visible. The normal allowance is one square foot sign on two sides of the fuel canopy. So that's basically, it's normally like a stamp of the type of fuel it is, like on two different sides. And also wanted to mention the canopy would be significantly below the, the grade of State Route two sixty and that makes the sign less visible from other signs in this zone. There are criteria for approving a waiver and I've addressed those in the staff report if you have any questions about those. So this is a photograph showing two sixty and you can see it significantly above the store and with a fuel island to be back in this location. And this is the proposed canopy sign, so it would have these two signs on it facing two sixty. This is a picture of the site where the fuel island would go. And these are some existing trees that are on the site, so there would be some existing trees left on the site. And so these are like right at the edge. The, the right of way is really wide here, so there are also trees in that right of way. Terms of citizen participation, property owners within five hundred feet were invited to a neighborhood meeting that's held on April fourth, twenty twenty five. Two people attended the meeting and they were in support. That's basically, basically because there isn't very much fuel available in this area. In fact, there's one other gas station, kind of an older gas station down the road a little ways. So there's nothing really between, I think Star Valley and Heber, so there's not a lot of gas around here. There weren't any concerns and staff hasn't received any comments on this application. And this is a staff's analysis. The proposed conditional use is consistent with comprehensive plan and meets the findings of fact. The comp plan supports commercial development projects located and designed in a manner that is compatible with the character of the area in which a project is proposed. And the project, as I've said before, provides a new source of fuel in an area where there's very little fuel available. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. I've addressed those in the staff report. And that staff recommends approval of CUP twenty five seventeen with the recommended conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Commissioner Leslie, please go ahead.
Thank you. So Bob, would this be above ground storage tanks with the proper containment in case of any fuel leakage?
Commissioner Leslie? My understanding is it would be below, below ground fuel tanks. I don't, didn't see anything on site plan in case it be above ground. There, I believe there is something here, but I'm not positive about that. Yeah, I could answer that question for you, but we use here. Check for sure.
Yeah, it almost looks like items eleven and twelve are, would be above ground storage, but I, I was just curious.
Thank you, Commissioner Leslie.
Thank you, Commissioner Leslie. Any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Short? Mr. Short, just so I'm clear, the signs for Gilligan and fuel prices are going to be on the north facing side of that canopy?
Vice Chair Wilson, that is correct, yes.
So you won't be able to see them unless you're basically right in front of there going sixty miles an hour?
Yeah, you, well, let's go back to that picture. Like cars would be here and, and you can see the general store sign, you know, like you can, you can look down as you go by. So they should be visible, somewhat visible.
Thank you. Any other questions for, for Mr. Short? Seeing none, we will open for public comment. If there is anyone here from the public that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand and we will call any. We need you to state your name, your address, and let me your comments to three minutes, please. So the phone number that ends in, oh, it showed just a second ago. One five seven nine. Could you please introduce yourself and tell us your address and share your comment?
Hi there. My name is Loretta Aha and my address is eight four two five East Virginia Avenue, Scottsdale, Arizona. I have the property adjacent to the store. The prior meeting, I did not receive notice, so I didn't know that, I probably should have gone to that meeting, but apparently he sent it to my old address and so I never had any idea. So I'm just gonna kind of rattle off my concerns. And then I guess you guys can answer them if you know the answers. I'm not like against it. I'm not definitely for it as well, but like I said, I just have concerns. So first, the light pollution. I just wanted to know if the lights being directed, you know, downward and if it's going to, my properties, RV park and some cabin rentals. So you know, the sky is, a lot of people are enjoying that, the nature and the sky. So I just do have a concern about the light pollution and the aesthetics for Forest Lakes itself if with that. I'd also like to, on the, I believe it's the west side of the property. The propane tanks have, were used to be on the other side of the property. Now they're closest to the cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac is, the only way to say it is, is very busy. It can be a real headache because all the public pull in and park any way possible. Now that the propane tanks are on the other side, they can't pull up as close as they used to. So the parking is just any which way but loose inside that cul-de-sac. I saw on the map that he did do like a little divider line of in and out. It's, I would hope that it would work that way, but the likelihood of people parking and blocking all of the traffic moving over to the other side of the cul-de-sac, it's guaranteed it's gonna happen. And I have two different drives there. We have to go out constantly and ask people to move. That pool, that every, a vehicle, an RV need to go to the store. The front parking gets full pretty quickly. So everyone just starts parking all inside the cul-de-sac. And again, like, and we are friendly when we ask people to move and it's not always a nice turnout with them yelling, we'll be back in a minute. What's the big deal? But it's an entrance and exit, so for both, the RV park and the cabins. And so we just, I don't know really any other way for that to work for him, but at the same time, there is a concern there. So it's just the congestion right there. And in the winter, the snowplow comes and I've had to call multiple times because they push all of the snow and they do block the entrances. So we just have, I just want to mention that the, when snow does come, that it is cleared completely and how that is going to be handled because it can't just be all shuffled to one side. And they have the ingress and egress of in and out and going around and whatnot as well. I think that's about it. I just wanted to make, put my concerns out there. I didn't know if they have been addressed or not. If you knew the answers to that of any of what I just kind of threw out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Short, will this property fall under the dark skies requirements in the county?
Vice Chair Wilson, yes, they do. We, we have a countywide dark skies ordinance, basically outdoor lighting ordinance, and it has been recently updated. So this, the fuel canopies are something that are specifically addressed in there. There's always something that, you know, we could definitely require his outdoor lighting permit.
Okay. And could you bring the site plan back up again, just so we can familiarize ourselves with what we just heard about?
Uh, yeah. So you're looking at it? I think it's a.
I'm sorry?
Can, can you see it? It should be on.
No, we're seeing, you're not screen sharing right now.
Oh, no.
I, Vice Chair Wilson, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing the site plan.
Yep, seeing it.
Yep. Never mind. I apparently somehow switched to a different view. All right. So the area that we're talking about is the gas island in the, the middle to eastern side. We are not talking about that cul-de-sac at all. Is that correct? Any changes from this CUP?
Mr. Wilson, this is, I mean, the, the store has existed there, like I said, from that, since nineteen seventy three. So this is kind of separate, this is separated from the retail store. It's been approved, the signage on the store has been approved. The parking has been approved. This is just the fuel island and the fuel island does not require any additional parking, so we're pretty much just looking at this as just the CUP for the fuel island loans because obviously cars move in, they get gas, they move out.
Right. So and the area where this, this is going to be constructed, will that be paved now as opposed to treated as it was?
The, the applicant, yeah, yes, it will, except the applicant is requesting a paving waiver, so it would be like compact gravel.
But it would present some additional possible parking for people going to the store?
That, that's possible, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that have questions or, or have comments to share with us tonight? Not seeing anyone's hands raised. All right, I will close the public comment period and open it to commission discussion. And if there is a commissioner that would like to, I think somebody had their hand up just a second ago. Commissioner Best? Please go ahead.
Thank you. This is going to increase traffic, so I think that it would not be unreasonable to require additional signage as a condition to direct people in a way that does not block adjacent properties as part of the fuel, fuel island addition. So if staff could come up with such a condition? It's a little unclear to me exactly where property lines are, whether, whether the circle there is part of this applicant's property. Is that correct?
Well, Commissioner Best, the property line, let me go back. Let's see. Well, I guess you can see it on here. The property line comes up from down here, goes around the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac, I mean, the, yeah, cul-de-sac is not part of the subject property and then it goes back this way. And let me pull up the aerial, it shows a little better, I think.
And, and while you're pulling that up, Bob, this is, Vice Chair Wilson, this is just with staff. The cul-de-sac is actually right of way and that image, the aerial image that is up now clearly shows that. So that's, so now we've got, basically we have people parking in the right of way. So that, that could be another thing we managed. And obviously the site plan is showing some improved parking along the north side of the store and, and designated in and out routes. So I think that might be, that might be something to try to get management of people parking in the cul-de-sac, which is parking in the right of way is, sounds like the issue.
And I should mention that, so in this case, we have an encroaching permit required by ADOT because of the highway up here. Yeah, the highway does have, it has right turn lanes and center turn lanes, as you can see. It only has them on this end by, on, on Spring Loop. It doesn't have both on this side. It doesn't have a, let's see, which one, right turn lane or on this side? The other thing is that, so this is a, this is a county maintained road. Spring Loop is a county maintained road. So that requires an encroaching permit as well. So the county, you know, our engineering division will look at that and likely have some requirements for that.
So Mr. Short, then the, what I'm hearing you say is between ADOT and the county, there are going to be traffic requirements reviewed and perhaps required as a part of this project. Is that correct?
That is correct. Vice Chair Wilson, yes. That is correct, Vice Chair Wilson, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds like that would be the way to mitigate the neighbors problem and hopefully our staff can. Communicate with the proper authorities and make sure that happens because I'm sure on a. Busy weekend, especially with the new fuel island, there's gonna be parking issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best, I see another hand raised from someone's number that ends in four six. Who is that? It's not there anymore, okay. Any other commissioners then? Have.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Oh, hi, I'm sorry, this is John Gilligan, the owner of the Forest Lakes property. I was trying to join for the last thirty minutes on my computer and on Microsoft Teams, but it wasn't letting me, so I found the number to dial in. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm late for the meeting, I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. At this point, I don't believe that we have any unless any of the commissioners have a question for the applicant. Not seeing any, oh, Mr. or Commissioner Leslie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Gilligan, maybe you can answer the question. Mr. Short was not sure about, but are these going to be above ground stored fuel tanks or are they going to be in ground?
They're going to be in-ground storage.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments amongst the commission members? Then I would like to entertain a motion. For CUP twenty-five dash zero one seven.
I move that we approve CUP twenty-five dash zero one seven.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. And I believe that was Commissioner Walsh, is that correct?
Williams.
Williams, welcome. I have a motion for Commissioner Best and a second from Commissioner Williams to approve CUP twenty-five dash zero one seven as presented. I will take a rule call vote, Commissioner Tohe.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
And I to vote aye, the motion passes as presented. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is CUP twenty-five dash zero four four, a community center.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson, members of the commission, this case is Clear Creek Pines Community Center, CUP twenty-five forty-four. And in this case, the property owners Clear Creek Pines Property Owners Association, I wanted to mention that that includes units nine and ten of Clear Creek Pines subdivision. And that this, the. Property owners association is located in Scottsdale. The applicant is Maurice Provinci of Scottsdale. The location of the property is at fifty-one fifty-one Enchanted Lane in Blue Ridge. The zoning is RR one, that's real residential, one acre minimum parcel size and the property size is one point zero four acres. Request is a renewal of a CUP for the community center with modifications to add a nurse practitioner's office. The zoning ordinance defines that as a health clinic. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property, you can see it's kind of right toward the center of this Blue Ridge subdivision area. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. It has driveways coming off of Green Ridge on this side and Enchanted Lane on this side. This is the old fire station that is now the community center. And. You can see some, the mailboxes along here and this is the community park right here, very treed. This is some background in the proposal, in two thousand and five, the community center was approved. On the side of an old fire station, it was moved to another location. In two thousand and fifteen, the cup, the CUP expired without being renewed. The uses on the property, as I've said, includes mailboxes, it has a wellhouse and water storage tank. Has a lending library, a park, a kitchen and meeting and social events, those are some of the uses that occur on this property. And the modification of course add the nurse practitioner's office. And this is, this is the site plan, again, the mailboxes. The water storage tank is back here along with the wellhouse. This is the community building. There are parking areas on each side. And this is the park. This is a photograph from the front of the community building, community center.
Do you remember the name of the estate company?
And this is, this, the kind of side porch facing the park, the lending library is actually right here, this is where the books are kept. And this is the proposed nurse practitioner's office, it's already been kind of remodeled nicely to meet that need. This is the park, heavily treated horse. And these are the mailboxes on the site. This is the water tank and the wellhouse. Some members of the, of the community get their water here. And in terms of citizen participation, this, this community center has been here for twenty years, so the director has waived the requirement to have a. Neighborhood meeting or a citizen participation process. However, the applicant has provided forty-six letters from neighbors supporting the nurse practitioner's office. And staff hasn't received any comments opposed to the project. And this is some staff analysis, the proposed conditional use is consistent with the findings of fact and the conference of plan. And these are three different policies in the conference of plan. They're in your staff report as well. The conference of plan encourages the planning and establishment of safe and accessible public spaces for residents to be active, socialized. And establish community ties. It supports the development of community facilities and activities that promote and generate public interaction. And it also supports community facilities and activities that promote a greater sense of place. By enhancing community identity and local pride. And also wanted to mention that the nurse practitioners office is of course needed in this area, this is. A seasonal area where there just aren't any of these types of services nearby at all. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. They have been addressed in your staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty-five forty-four with the recommended conditions. And I'll take any questions from the commission.
There's a person named Ryan with their hand up and I believe you're a member of the public. Public comment will be right after this, so if you could just hold for just a second, we'll get to you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Short? Commissioner Burger?
I'm just a thought, I'm. If they're gonna have nursing services. Where if somebody is there and they have some emergency, how are they gonna get taken to the emergency facility or is there one nearby?
Mr. Short?
Commissioner Burger, I think. There, there is a fire station right down the road, just a few blocks down, I'm not sure what kind of, what kind of. Services they have, but I guess the point here is that they don't have anything right now, so this is an improvement to what they currently have. I don't know, you know, the nearest hospital, as far as I know, was probably in Winslow, so. This is definitely an improvement and something that's needed, I think.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a question, I totally agree.
Thank you, Commissioner Burger, any other commissioner questions for Mr. Short? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to public comment, during public comment, we ask that you raise your hand so we can be recognized. Please introduce yourself and give us your. Address so that we know who we're talking, hearing from and then limit your comments to three minutes. Letty Ryan, your hand is up first and we'd like to invite you to share your thoughts.
Hi, my name is Nurse Practitioner Letty Ryan. I am submitting this statement in opposition to the approval of the special use permit for the proposed medical clinic. There at fifty-one fifty-one Enchanted Lane, while on the surface, this application appears to request a legitimate use of the property for a healthcare facility. I have direct knowledge that the owner's intentions are not as they have been presented. I previously leased this property as a licensed medical provider and intended, I'm sorry, invested. A substantial amount of my time, effort and financial resources into preparing this space for clinical use. Including my rent payments and. To the tune of about fifteen thousand dollars of property improvements. At no time during our lease negotiations or occupancy did the owner disclose that the property was not zoned or permitted for commercial medical use. I later discovered that no such commercial authorization existed. As a result, I suffered significant financial losses due to misrepresentation and omission of critical facts that would have directly influenced my decision to lease this space. Additionally, the current tenant occupying that space is not a healthcare provider at all, but rather it's a West USA Realty office. This further demonstrates that the proposed medical use is not genuine and that the request for special use permit is being made under the false pretenses. To repurpose the property for non-medical commercial purposes. For these reasons, I strongly urge the commission to deny this special use permit application. Granting this request would reward unethical behavior, enable continued misrepresentation to future tenants. And set a concerning precedent that undermines the integrity of the county zoning and permitting processes. I thank you for your time, I'll answer any questions you have for me.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Are there any other members of the public here that have any comments? I see Sean Wood, could you introduce yourself and give us your physical address, please?
Hello, I'm Roy Dean. My address is seven zero one one. South two hundred and twenty-first Avenue in Buckeye, Arizona. I am currently a board member, the treasurer of the board. For the association. And I believe. That. We did have agreement with Letty. But I believe that when she went to get a health certificate, that's when we realized that we had to have the zoning. And we offered. To help her with it or pay for it even. And she pulled out because I feel. I don't know, we feel like there was lots of members of the community church that. That put a lot of effort into getting her an office built and everything and they were pretty disappointed when it, when it all blew up, so. We decided to go ahead with the plan and apply for the right zoning. Or the use permit. And the only thing left we'd have to do is to go through the health department and make sure that it's up to health standards. And our full intention is to get. We were hoping that maybe Letty would even come back and, and try it once we got all the things straightened out and. But at this point, we have two other nurse practitioners that are offering to. Take turns operating in that, in that office in the community and. Once again, the whole community is for this and. I believe that it would be a good thing for the community and then I wanted to also address the. Point that the fire station has a helicopter pad and they. If there was somebody that's really sick or something, it's only, it's only. Three house, or three buildings down from where our community center is, was the fire station with a helicopter pad, so. There, there will be. A way to service somebody that is in dire problems. So we are advocating for trying to do this for the community, we have no. ulterior motives or intent of doing things wrong. We're all volunteer staff, volunteer directors. And we've been trying real hard to get this, get this up and going, so it could be something that the community could be proud of. And we've spent all of our time is volunteer time, we don't get paid for anything. And so we feel like. We should have this zoning changed so that we can improve the, the community. And I, I'm sorry that. Letty got. She feels like she got. Not directed right, but there may be a little. A little too out of our not having the knowledge of what needed to be done there, but we kind of, like I said, we did offer.
Yes, sir, excuse me for just one second, Mr. McDely, are we timing tonight?
We are, Chair, Vice Chair Wilson, however, I believe this gentleman is, is almost part of the application. And we failed to, to have the applicant speak before, before we jumped into public hearings, so. Yeah, we, we just went over the three minutes with this gentleman, so maybe we need to reconfirm if this is the applicant or not.
That's basically what I had to say, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDely, I was opening a public comment and then going to the applicant afterwards, but I was, I've got it backwards here, so. We will correct that. This one time, if we don't have any other members of the public that have. A comment, I would like to invite the applicant, if they are here, to address the committee and the commission. And if you are aware of, familiar with and approve of the conditions, let us know whether that is the case, is the applicant here tonight? Or a representative?
Sir, I am there, I am representing the applicant tonight. As the applicant is our president of the association and he had to be out of town and didn't have. So I am representing it.
And did you have anything else that you needed to share then?
No, sir, I agree with the, the conditions and, and I just would hope that. The community would have someplace to go when they need to. And we're offering that through our community centers, so. That's what the property was intended for when Southwest Horse Industries developed the property, they intended it to be. In the end, to be for a community center and park, so anyway, that's. That's my two cents, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other, let's see. Ms. Ryan, we were limited to one comment period per person. I see your hand, but unfortunately, you've had your, your time, so I cannot call on you again. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission on this issue? Okay, we're gonna close it to both public and applicant comment and we are gonna open commission discussion now. Is there any commissioners that would like to start this off or have any questions or concerns? Commissioner Leslie?
Thank you, Vice Chair, just for clarification, we've talked about the CUP twenty-five oh forty-four and then the applicant also mentioned a rezone. So what exactly are we trying to decide tonight, is it the CUP or is it a rezone status? Thank you.
Mr. Short?
Hey, Bob, you're muted. Sorry, I'm muted. Mr. Leslie, this is a conditional use permit for both the community center and a health clinic. And staff added the health clinic to make, to make sure that they have basically zoning entitlements for this. Nurse practitioner. nurse practitioner's office and make it very clear. So the message we got from the applicant was that uh, the nurse practitioner actually wanted a clear zoning authority to open a health clinic here, basically. So it, it's a conditional use permit, but, uh, in this zone, health, uh, health clinic is allowed with the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
Wish your best.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Short. I, I don't have the conditions in front of me, but I assume one of them says that, um, basically the applicant needs to follow the plan and the plan is as described. Uh, we had a comment that, uh, there was a real estate office there and maybe this, uh, was disingenuous, but, um, I'm assuming that as, as is normal, we have a condition that says they must follow the plan if this is approved. Is that correct?
It's the best that is correct. I was pulling up the conditions.
Okay. Uh, your word is, your word is for me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other members of the commission have any questions or comments that they would like to share regarding CUP twenty-five dash zero four-four? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve CUP dash twenty-five dash zero zero four with the six conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams, and a second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Walsh, I'll second that.
Okay, I think Commissioner Burger beat you by just a second, so we're going to say we have a motion by Commissioner Williams, a second by Commissioner Burger to approve CUP twenty-five zero four-four with the six conditions as listed. I will take a rule call vote, starting with Commissioner Togi.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion passes. All right. I am going to try something a little different here. It is six twenty-four, and I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break so everyone can refresh themselves before we begin the next topic. So we will start again at zero, at, uh, six thirty. Okay. Okay, it is six thirty, and I would like to call this meeting back to order. Hopefully everyone is back with us. Um, because this next item, CUP twenty-five dash zero two-two, is a continuation from the previous meeting we had in August, and therefore a slightly different kind of a situation, I consulted today with staff and legal and have a brief, um, opening statement here. So for background, um, we continued this case last month in order to provide legal an opportunity to give us guidance on whether there was a requirement to conduct a public meeting prior to hearing a CUP. Since that time, the applicant has conducted a public meeting and the results were included in the commission's packet. So that issue has been resolved. If you haven't seen them, page seventy-seven on the page numbers or eighty, according to Adobe, is where those, where that public meeting, um, notice is in the current packet. To summarize that meeting, three property owners participated and expressed concerns. They were Paul Mooney, Sean Good, and Lacy Scott. The issues they identified were the bridge, road maintenance, and heavy vehicle traffic, fire access, public safety and evacuation routes, cows and elk's and, and elk in the conservation easement, gate access, and manure. As a reminder, um, because we got a little off track last time, um, by state law, our discussion of this item tonight cannot include the impacts this case may or may not have on water use or adequacy. Since this is a continuation of the discussion, we will only, we will open public comment only to address issues identified at the public meeting. Comments from the August meeting are part of the record and will be part of our consideration and need not be repeated. Following the comment period, the applicant or their representative will have an opportunity to address the issues raised at the public meeting. And then we, the commission, will continue our discussion where we left off. So I would like to open it up in the correct sequence here, which would mean the applicant, if you would like to address the commission on the public meeting that you conducted and the results of that, we would like to hear from you. Is the applicant or their representative here with us this evening?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hey, I'm having trouble with my video right now. Let me see if I can get back up. If it's not necessary or not, let me see here. You guys see me? There we go.
Yes, we can.
Hey, yeah, so we had the meeting on September ninth. We had it virtually. Um, we have Mr. Mooney there, Lacy Scott, and, uh, Lacy's boyfriend. Mr. Mooney mentioned the elk. And obviously, the road was brought up again. Uh, we did confirm through the county with Zach and Jess that in terms of emergency access, we are within the, the Pinewood, uh, Fire District, so they will service the area in terms of emergency as well as the road meeting the standard for an emergency vehicle to go in and out to the uh, structures over there, including some of the houses and whatnot. Lacy mentioned just proper location of the porta potty or, or some sort of bathroom hiding it in some way so that it's not visible, because obviously, nobody wants to look at that. Uh, mentioned some trees or a, a landscape plan. And, uh, overall, it was, uh, I thought it was a productive meeting and fairly quick. We had, you know, two neighbors there. And, uh, everything that we, uh, went over was submitted into the pretty much same exact PowerPoint. I don't know if you guys want me to go over that again and be here till ten o'clock at night. Um, but, uh, nothing has changed on our end in terms of the, uh, presentation. We still are requesting approval based on the, some of the conditions above, like the trees and shared maintenance of the road and whatnot. The, um, we've had some group chats with, uh, the five parcel owners here. We're gonna, we're gonna meet next month, face-to-face meeting, just so we can all get on the same page and, and discuss a good plan for the road. But again, that was a private issue that we are all going to solve for each other. Uh, but other than that, yeah, it was about twenty minutes and that was it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time. Jordan's on a plane right now to Spain, so I'm on my own.
All right, we will now open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on the public meeting or the issues that were brought up at that public meeting? Ms. Scott, you are recognized. Please introduce yourself. Give us your address and share your thoughts.
Hello, my name is Lacy Scott. I live at two-two-eight-four-six Fox Ranch Road, right adjoining neighbor, basically. Um, so is Ryan going to address any of the issues like the gate situation or the water? Other issues than just the road where the meeting, where us neighbors are going to meet about the road and the bridge issue? I'm wondering if he's going to have a signage plan. What is his, um, take on the elk and maybe a wildlife study? We also have a lot of conservation area around us, so how that's going to affect, you know, owls, birds, we have a lot of blue heron, eagles, you know, we're in Flagstaff, we've got it all. Um, his landscape plan with irrigation, uh, you know, I think that needs to be addressed. I'm not sure why none of that's being addressed. When, when will these items be addressed, I guess, is the real question, is that, is that we need to put something in writing and oppose him again? And have him address all these issues? Like, I don't feel like there's any resolution as to any ideas as to what he's going to actually do. His site plan is pretty basic. I owned a, a nursery and, um, contracting business in Munn's Park, so I've kind of been through this. I sort of know what needs to be done. Um, but you know, a traffic study, you're having fifteen horseboarders come in. I think that needs to be addressed. Property management, you have an absentee owner, and we don't honestly even know what Ryan, his experience is in the horse business. So we live in a very remote area, so it's hard to find, you know, employees and stuff like that. So kind of like to know what the property management plan is going to be as he is an absentee owner. I get you've addressed the fire protection there. Um, the signage plan, I think that's something to deal with, and fly abatement, which I guess would be the manure. So if we could address those issues, would be very helpful. But yeah, all of us neighbors are in opposition of him. I think that needs to be noted, whether they're here or not. Um, and I think these all need to be, all these issues need to be addressed. So let us know when that can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. I appreciate your comments. Are there any other members of the public that are here that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I am going to close it to public comment and open it to discussion here amongst the commission. Any members of the, oh, I see JC has just raised their hand. JC, if you're a member of the public that would like to comment, please introduce yourself and give us your street address.
Oh, sorry, Chair. Sorry, Chair Wilson, it's a accident.
Oh. No problem. Anyone else from the public? All right. We are to commission discussion. We are to commission discussion now, so any members of the commission that would like to start this conversation? Wish your best.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, so we've got a list.
Mr. Chair, I'm very sorry, and Commissioner Best, I apologize. There are two JCs on, and I think the other one did have his hand up. Sorry to interrupt.
I will, I will back out then.
All right, you will yield your, your time to the gentleman named JC or person named JC. JC, could you introduce yourself? Give us your street address and then share your three minutes of.
Yeah, my name's Jay Klinger. I reside at one zero five nine five Los Angeles Land. Who has, uh, um, I'm lot five owner. Um, I am, um, against a business being run out of any of these lots. I don't know if any of you have been down there. This is in a place that you run, that you run a business. Um, I also, like Lacy, um, can't comprehend how we can approve something without, uh, addressing a lot of different things. She already vocally spoke about them here tonight. Um, I do build things. Uh, I am a licensed contractor in the state of Arizona, and I understand um, a lot of things that need to be addressed, especially with the public and, and, uh, uh, road access and, and restrooms and water, um, manure. Um, I do own horses. And I understand this whole process. Um, you guys really should look into this further before you approve it. I understand that most of you guys last time were for this, but if you looked into it a little further, you might understand, um, this isn't a place for a business. There's no facilities for this. And like, and, and also like Lacy said, we have an absentee owner. We have somebody that's never, ever there. You guys kind of got sold a bag worms by his attorney last time, saying that his family was going to come up and start this grand old business. That's not what's going on. So I wish you guys would look into it a little further. Maybe you can answer some of the questions regarding the facilities and when that gets addressed. Um, you can't have public just come out and use the forest as their restroom. Um, anyhow, I appreciate your guys' time and I appreciate what you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, JC. Appreciate your thoughts. Thank you, JC. Appreciate your thoughts. Last call for anyone from the public that has a thought to share with us, please raise your hand. Seeing none. Commissioner Best. Care to start over?
Thank you. Yes, I do. So we're taking. Water use off the table. Because. As we know, that's state law. My biggest concern, I think, our first concern is emergency response and. I'd like to hear from staff and possibly counsel. Normally, I went and stood on the bridge a few days ago. I doubt that it's going to be certified. For 42,000 pounds. The road is. In deteriorating shape. So the question is. Is the condition of that road and bridge something that we can legitimately? Bring into this discussion?
So Commissioner Best, this is Jess with staff and I'll try to address that as as simply as possible. The commission could take that into consideration if they thought it was relevant. However, the zoning ordinance does not have specific emergency access requirements for this use. Such as we do for a commercial campground. In the case of a commercial campground, there's a requirement that. That the applicant who's bringing out just the general public demonstrate that their access with permits meets a meets the county's road requirement. Which includes being capable of supporting the 42,000 pound emergency access vehicle. The zoning ordinance sees this use as very compatible and and. Very similar to just average rural use in that. It's anticipated, you know, we know the the amount of of. Livestock horses that would be allowed on this property by right actually exceeds what the applicant's wanting to do. And it's an understanding that people who live in this area, particularly a road such as this, it's that's privately maintained and has a road maintenance agreement. The the property owners out there take that upon themselves. So if if you felt that there was some additional requirement because these horses are being boarded. That that the road be required to be proven to be able to support a emergency services vehicle. That would be, you know, that that could certainly be your your recommendation or and your condition as a commissioner. But the zoning ordinance doesn't see, doesn't have a requirement for that. And the use is typically is is really considered a typical use in G-zone rural areas. I hope that helps answer your question.
Yeah, puts the pressure on us, but thank you. The the way I see this. You know, I've had a horse, many of us have. If I lived in Phoenix. I would definitely. Put my horse here in the summer. The. RC Stables website advertises that there is direct trail access, which is. Really great. If you have a horse there, so I would be up every weekend and I expect there'll be quite a few people up every weekend. They also advertise a full arena for $500 a day. I wonder. What the use of that arena would be? Would there be competitions? $500 a day is a lot of money to. Ride your horse around in a circle. So the emergency response to me is, you know, I consider my first job health and safety. If there are people here on horses. If there is a fire. You could. Need emergency response with a with a full engine and I don't think that bridge is up to it. That to me is probably the biggest issue. I will also just say as. The gamble oaks are not appropriate for screening. They only have leaves on them six months a year. And condition, I think two. Should be changed to to say native evergreens instead of gamble oak. So I'll just listen to what the other commissioners have to say. Maybe we could go around a few times. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Any other members of the commission have a thought that they would like to share? Not seeing any hands go up, I will take an opportunity to share a couple of thoughts. I, too, Commissioner Best. Have concerns that on the website it lists facility rentals. Which means it's kind of an ambiguous term, but someone could rent the arena and have an event. They could have a wedding. They could have a whatever. And so I'm unclear what that means and what the implications of that could end up being. It also says that. On the website that trailer storage would be provided, yet. In the application, it suggests the trailers would not be on site. I too have visited the site and took a look at the bridge. It wasn't as bad as what some had suggested, but it was definitely not something I would drive a 42,000 pound vehicle across. Unless it were an emergency. So I echo Commissioner Best's concerns about that. But most importantly. We've received. Well, eight different. Oppositions to this project and and none in favor of it other than from the applicant. And in my opinion, we're here to represent the public and the neighborhood. That surrounds this particular applicant. Has made themselves fairly clear. So those are my thoughts and Commissioner Hayward, please share yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. I I wanted to address. Two things that you guys brought up because I do disagree. I think firstly, and I think pretty importantly. I don't believe that we're here to. Represent the public. I believe we're here to. Provide an unbiased. Application of the zoning code. You know, as a volunteer organization, right, we're driven by. Not by politics. Not by any other other interests and our job is to to support the. The zoning code and support our planning documents. And I think as. Just had earlier. You know, this use. Is very compatible with the rural character of our community. This place has been a ranch for, you know, until folks. Shut it down and turned it into their vacation homes. This place was a ranch, right, which would have been full of horses and cattle and sheep and God knows what. So. You know, I I think it's really important to weigh the concerns of neighbors which tend to, you know, generally go in wonder action. And the benefits to our overall community. And I think that this this project. Will. Benefits to the community will will exceed those concerns. I think the other major point here, right? You know, we, this this guy, these guys' roads is a mess, right? Their privately maintained road that they have failed to maintain is a mess. These folks who are going to be building their homes here should consider that that if. They want emergency services access to their own properties, they should get together and look after their road and maintain it. That's not, that's not our concern. You know, so I think we need to maintain our focus on those things that are part of the code. And maintain our focus on deciding what's best for for our community overall. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I see, let's see a couple more hands here. Let me get. The correct sequence of who's first. To Commissioner Best is second. Go ahead. Commissioner Best.
Yeah, I want to express that. We are not enforcing the zoning code here. We are representing. The county comprehensive plan. And. The county comprehensive plan is a values document, a policy document. And. There is every reason in the world, I think, to. You know, the zoning code is prescriptive. It says exactly what you what you must do and cannot do. The comprehensive plan has goals and policies. Which reflect values. And there's no reason not to. Include the values of. Safety. The neighbors. Those are probably the two. Most important in this particular case. And. That's that's why I'm here. And I I think that's why. Planning and zoning is here because. It's not prescriptive. It's not a list of things. It's it's neighbors. Coming together, ourselves, the commissioners. Talking to neighbors and trying to make sure everybody is represented and coming up with. A fair and balanced decision. So that's, I I just look at it in a different way and I I wanted to express that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Togi.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Maybe this is a question to staff. There were. The vice chair had talked about certain things being off the table because they're not part of what we need to address and that was water. And then it was, then there was adequacies. So can you give me or us? What the adequacies are? Is that all the same things that? Just just mentioned regarding emergency access. The the private privately maintained roads, etc. So I just want to have some clarity on that. Thank you.
Mr. McNally, would you like to do that or I can repeat?
Sure, I think I think Vice Chair Wilson, I think what Commissioner Togi was when she used the word adequacy and asking about adequacy, I believe. What you had mentioned early on. In opening this case was that we couldn't discuss water adequacy. That was the only.
Water use or adequacy, yes.
Yeah, water use or adequacy. So I wouldn't have anything else to add to that on what on what can be considered.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams.
I just want to say I concur with Commissioner Hayward. I think this is. An appropriate use for this and I think the biggest issues. Are private issues between the neighbors. And I think that. They can figure that out. I don't think they need us to do that. Because they're going to be building homes and having huge trucks in and out, you know, it's like. Moving forward, they're just going to need to deal with their road and I don't really. And they may need emergency services. It's not just the people boarding horses are going to need emergency services. So it seems like it's putting that burden on one. Landowner there. Rather than all of them, so. That's my take.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other members of the commission have a thought that they would like to share? I'm finding it interesting this evening that we have, oh, there's Commissioner Burger. Please go ahead.
I'm in agreement that we can't be the. The land police in this case. That's for sure. I think the only thing is being more transparent on the website and the things that they're. Actually proposing versus what they're going to do with it. I think that's a fair ask. Because having parties is not equestrian. Having competitions is definitely going to lend itself to. A lot of other situations. So I just think it's fair to be a little bit more. Transparent, that's all.
Commissioner Burger, that puts us in a difficult position because we would have to list conditions. For the CUP that would place restrictions on those types of things. If that was what we were trying to accomplish here because asking them to change the website has no. Authority or anything else.
It was more of a comment than saying they should do it.
Okay. Thank you. I. Was going to mention that I find it interesting that some of us have a difference of opinion and that's going to be a great topic for us to discuss at a future. Side meeting as to exactly what our role is here. I I tend to think of us more as there is a zoning code and that code is pretty clear. But when there are questions that are outside of what the zoning code can answer, that's where they ask for our opinions. And interpretations of things. And incorporating things like the neighbors and and other factors into that decision. So. We can all agree to have a different perspective here and maybe smooth that out more in the future. So I will do a last call for anyone else from the commission that has a meeting. I can see the applicant. I recognize, sir, you had your hand up, but you also had your opportunity. Unless a commissioner has a specific question for the applicant. We're not going to call back on you. So I'm not seeing, oh, Commissioner Best.
Yeah, this is a really tough one. We've continued at once. Since they have a website which seems to be so much more commercial than they are describing. In the application. I mean. If the applicant wanted to. So the applicant should know if this fails, and I have no idea. Obviously, the commission is somewhat split. You have to wait a year to come back. And if. You were to ask for continuance, we're going to have the second continuance, but we might be able to work some of these things out. I don't have the conditions in front of me. Unfortunately, I did not copy them and my other computer is not working. The way I had two of them. But we might be able to, we might be able to review as a commission the. Conditions. And satisfy some people about what is actually going to happen on this property, whether it's just going to be. A dozen people on their horses or some suddenly there's a. $500 a day ring with competitions and a lot of people showing up, so. I just throw that information out more to the applicant than anyone else. There is an opportunity to put this off and maybe. Tighten up a little bit. What's? What's going to happen here, especially since it's really already happening because there is an existing website. That that is up before the zoning is the. Before it's gone through the planning zone commission, so. I'm rambling here because this is a tough case and I'm just trying to put out some ideas and hopefully we come up with a good answer. Thanks.
So Vice Chair Wilson, this is Jess with staff and to Commissioner Best's comments there. We have an application. That application has a narrative and a site plan. What we're reviewing and to narrow in the discussion of what your purpose is, purpose is to see if you can make the findings. The four findings required for a conditional use permit and we can certainly. Put those up on the screen. Right now Zach has up on the screen the recommended conditions. So I would point out. Regardless of what's at a website, we're not, you're not here to make the findings on the impact of what's listed at a website. What you're here to make the findings on are the impacts of what's been requested and the conditions that were just up. A second ago, but would go without saying is that when you've requested a conditional use permit, you've submitted a narrative. That narrative typically has limits. To what it is you're asking for and I believe the narrative is pretty specific to horse boarding, to a specific number of horses. And I believe the narrative is pretty specific to horse boarding, to a specific number of horses, even a number of trips per day for customers and a site plan. So I would encourage you to focus on the findings straight out of the zoning warrants, and thanks Zach for putting them up on the screen. And then Zach has drafted some great conditions that you could look at to see if those conditions help you make the findings for the application, including the site plan and narrative that has been submitted.
Thank you, Mr. McNeeley, for that clarification. Do any other commissioners have any thoughts that they would like to share? Since Commissioner Best made a suggestion to the applicant, I would like to ask the applicant if they have any closing remarks relating to that suggestion.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I feel like I could clear up some of these fairly quickly. Please don't judge me on the website. Website's old. It was just there to kind of see what the outreach would be like from the community. It's been positive. There's not going to be events. We put that in the narrative. So the website would just simply need to be updated. I talked to two different civil engineers in Flagstaff about the road. Again, the road's not an issue, but I've had two of them look at it. One was CDNE, the other one was Hubbard Merrill. The main issue for them was just adding more padding, essentially gravel, make it thicker. Right now it's too thin. Maybe some of you noticed that. But their suggestion was spending five grand on an engineer is a little bit of a waste of money to, when you just need to add the more padding and you know, there are, in terms of the access as well, there's, you know, homes being built as we speak, there's no problems with excavators and trailers and cranes coming in as well as my 42,000 pound waste management coming in every single week. So we do want to support the road, but again, we're going to meet to do that privately. And like I said, I'm here trying to do things the right way because it's been going on for six years prior. And outside of the, outside of the website, I have not been operating prior to this permit. I think there's been some confusion about me having my personal horses there and one other friend's horse, nothing more than that. But I don't want to be judged on how things are being operated right now because I haven't started without the permit and was waiting to do so and just simply follow the right steps. And I didn't expect the opposition only because it had been going on for six years prior. And other neighbors have even boarded on the property, I found out. So it's, I'm just, I'm just trying to do things the right way and never meant to shock any neighbors with the letter. But here we are and, you know, some of the issues about, I would say the trailers were, you know, yeah. You know, I normally would, like you guys suggested, would have trailers. We pulled that off the narrative because we didn't want to piss off the neighbors. But again, I'm trying to balance all of the concerns so that it is satisfactory for everybody. So I hope that answers some of the questions. Again, I've been receptive. We wanted to fix the road in August. Didn't want to inconvenience some of the neighbors who were running their business there because the road would be shut down for about a week. So I think we're going to address it in October, once everybody's kind of out of there for the winter and make what needs to be done. But we'll have a private meeting for that and I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. All right, I think that wraps it up. We're going to entertain a motion at this point. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve case number CUP 25-22 with the five conditions of the staff report.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Walsh and Commissioner Williams, thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Walsh and a second from Commissioner Williams that we approve CUP 25-0... What, four?
Two-two.
Two-two. As recommended with the five conditions, I will take a rule call vote, starting with Commissioner Tohe.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Burger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward.
Aye.
And I vote aye. It passes unanimously. I wasn't heard.
Yeah.
And that takes us to next on my desk. Case number AM-25-001, a complete update, the 2025 Coquenaux County Comprehensive Plan.
So... Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson.
Yeah, go ahead.
And Melissa Shaw with our staff will be sharing her screen and giving a public hearing presentation.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public, and thank you for staying late and hearing this case. So as was mentioned, this is public hearing, case PZA1AM-25-001. It's a complete update to the county's comprehensive plan. Let me get the screen to, there's just an overview. So again, we're updating all of the text and data, including new and updated maps, figures, tables, division, goals and policies to be adopted as a major amendment to the plan. And this, the location includes the entire county, which is demonstrated by the image on the right. And as you know, it extends north to the border of Arizona and Utah, east to the border of Navajo County, west to the border of Mojave County, and shares a southern border with Yabapai and Gila Counties. The county has approximately 12 million acres total, which is over 18,000 square miles. All zoning districts are included in this update and all of the supervisor districts, one through five. And the applicant represented is the Community Development Department. And so I'll go through this presentation. I know that the commission has heard much of this already. We'll go through some of the details for members of the public who have joined us in case there are any questions.
Ms. Shaw, we're not going to, are we anticipating public comment on this tonight?
Yes.
We are?
Vice Chair Wilson, yeah, this is a public hearing for this case, yes. This is just a brief history of the county's comprehensive plan. First was adopted in 1975 as a general plan. And then that was updated again in 1990. In 2003, the plan was updated again, and that was in response to the 2000 Arizona Growing Smarter Legislation. Our current plan was adopted in 2015, and now we're moving toward the beginning of the comprehensive plan update, which we started in 2023. And just very quickly to look at the statutory requirements by chapter. You can see that all of the chapters have some element of required content per statute, and that is something that this plan then does include. So there are different components of the process. We'll just go through these fairly briefly. We started in 2023 with a scoping workshop, and we had results from that that helped us to understand how the plan needed to be updated. A major component of state statute is that there is a public participation plan. And so that outreach began in May of 2023 and continued through this month. Part of the process is obviously data analysis, writing the plan and updating everything to current conditions. We had that, a comprehensive plan advisory group that helped us with that process, and they reviewed all of the draft chapters, goals and policies, and implementation plan. Their last meeting was in August of this year of 2025. Also, part of the process was a 60-day review period from May to July of this year. And then we are having public hearings, beginning with this one tonight. And then we have a second public hearing scheduled with the Board of Supervisors in November. And then because public participation is such a big part, and public outreach is such a big part of this planning process, this is just a brief summary of the different engagement strategies that the Public Participation Plan outlined for us. So we started with intercept interviews. We had, those were, as you might guess, we talked to people at different events and asked some specific questions. We had responses from that effort. We conducted 29 focus groups throughout the county, across the entire geography of the county. And with that, we engaged 49 different groups. And that included, we had four different focus groups with different high schools. So it had a wide range of different communities that we engaged with in those one-on-one focus group meetings. We had multiple community events ranging from attending veteran stand downs to the county fair, to the Western Navajo Agency Fair. So those went on throughout the whole outreach process. We contracted and had a statistically valid countywide telephone survey conducted. They reached 400 residents and had complete responses from those participants. We used social media, media and mailers. We had a contact mailing list of over 400, about 450 people on that list. We've had digital and print articles that were sent out in countywide publications. We has a radio interview. And then, so when you look at this in total, we've had about 1,800 in-person contacts and then more digitally and online. So again, public participation is a big part of this. And what we've learned through that process then, we've learned about the shared values, we've learned about the vision. And these have all then been wrapped into the updated comprehensive plan. And the commission has seen these previously, but I will just go ahead and review these because this has led to how the organization, the plan is slightly different from our current 2015 plan. So there's a section on rural lifestyle because that came out as a very strong community value. And that talks about valuing a vibrant county economy with diverse housing options that support the integrity and sustainability of our rural community lifestyle. And then another value is being stewards of the natural environment. And this kind of follows on Jessica's presentation earlier. Being stewards of the land and natural environment is a very important value shared by the entire community. And then finally, diverse communities and services. We are inclusive and respect and honor the diversities of our communities, people, land and cultures through vibrant community connected by partnerships and countywide services. This has also led to the plans, what we would call core planning priorities and those tier off of those value statements where we look to maintain the county's rural lifestyle, rural character and lifestyle by managing growth and development. That provides opportunities for economic vitality and for equitable and accessible housing. Another core planning priority is to protect the natural environment, including water quality and water supply and to restore forest health. And then finally, to provide responsive public and emergency services and infrastructure to the county's diverse communities. And so we'll talk a bit about focus on the goals and policies. And just again, to reiterate that the plan is organized into different sections, if you will. So the rural lifestyle section, a specific, the specific value that guides the policies and goals in this section are valuing a vibrant county economy and diverse accessible housing options that support the rural community lifestyle. And then there are different vision characteristics that go along with that. And you can see it focuses again on economic development and regulations that support all of the rural lifestyle and housing options. Focusing also on inviting visitors to the county and looking for tourism being responsibly managed. And then this theme, the final vision is recognizing that all cultures are valued, respected and preserved. And so in this section, there are three different chapters. There's land use, growth, growth and development. And there are six specific goals related to land use, growth and development. There are also six goals in the circulation and transportation chapter. And then in resilient economies and housing, there are eight goals. And the policies that follow these really do then reflect those specific goals. So this is just a summary of the policies on land use. And they focus on locating higher density development near rural centers that have services and rural density development located where services are not available. The policies focus on locating regional commercial uses, resort, intense developments and industrial uses in areas, again, with access to public roads, utilities and emergency services. The policies focus on encouraging subdivision processes over land divisions. And it promotes the conservation of large working ranches and discouraging fragmented land use patterns. And it also encourages maintaining federally owned or managed public lands as open space. So again, this is a summary of the different policies, and those policies then reflect the goals of the land use section. Regarding the circulation and transportation policies, the goals and policies focus on coordinating transportation planning to minimize environmental impacts, and importantly, that prioritizes safety. It also focuses on funding and how to fund circulation improvements with developer contributions, ongoing support for new and existing funding sources, and forming improvement districts, which is a topic that comes up occasionally in your work with different CUP projects and rezonings. It also looks for connectivity and access for safety and efficient circulation. And then finally, again, this is a summary of those policies promoting alternative modes of travel and multimodal opportunities countywide. The resilient economies and housing chapter focuses on collaborating with partners to support business systems and opportunities. There are a lot of policies in there that support good access to education and skilled trade programs that's partly supported by our community service policies, which are in strong support of new broadband infrastructure provided countywide. Again, supporting those type of infrastructure and new programs that support businesses and that support working ranches. And then the last bullet, expand housing choices based on new studies and plans. This is a very important new goal added to the plan that does support further implementation items that really speak to the housing issue that is not just an issue in our more urban areas, but it also is an issue that came out of all the public outreach countywide. The next section is stewards of the natural environment, and we've talked about that value statement. Some of the vision that was, is reflected in these chapters really focus on open space trails, public lands and recreation facilities are connected and accessible to residents and visitors. The natural environment, natural resources and ecosystems are resilient, protected, connected and sustainably managed. And again, that all cultures are valued, respected and preserved. So in this section, we have the natural environment chapter with seven goals. We have the parks, open space trails and recreation chapter with four goals. We have the sustainability, resilience, energy and climate chapter with five goals. And then the water resources chapter has four goals. So we'll just talk a bit about the policy focus for each of these chapters. On the natural environment chapter, there are policies and goals that focus on conserving and protecting wildlife habitat, riparian habitat, flood plains and environmentally sensitive features. It addresses invasive and noxious weeds and how to manage those. It supports forest restoration, and that includes providing education for property owners about firewise and other programs. And then the natural environment chapter, also the policies focus on protecting our soils, the county's good air quality, scenic views and the dark night skies. The parks, recreation trails and open space chapter focuses on, the policies focus on seeking public input when there's our new park acquisition projects, park development and funding sources for new, for park development. It looks for new development to consider potential recreation needs in those developments. And then with that, looking to county parks and operations of existing park, county-owned parks, looking to the operation and management of parks to reduce any environmental impacts and other types of impacts. And then the fourth bullet is And then the fourth bullet is addressing coordinating trail planning that considers connections, multimodal and national trail system opportunities. This is tied back into the transportation chapter, supporting policies across topics. And then again, the last bullet recognizes the economic benefits of recreation and promotes responsible tourism. Again, this policy is connected to the policies that are in the resilient economies chapter. And these are all a result of the public outreach and the issues that we learned about from doing all that work. The sustainability resilience, energy and climate chapter has the focus on the goals and policies, look for implementing best practices, both for county facilities and then encouraging this across the county for owners that would want to engage in this type of construction for sustainable and efficient buildings and energy efficiency, promoting those practices. It looks for opportunities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and promote carbon sequestration. And then this is, all of these policies in this chapter are supported by an implementation action item that would create a countywide sustainability and resilience plan, which would have more details and how this could be accomplished. And then the next chapter is water resources. And the policies and the goals clearly support water sustainability, water quality and conservation. I will just again note, and as the commissioners all know, that the county is limited in how we can address water availability. This chapter does though, give a lot of detailed information about water supply, where the water is coming from. And it also does note the limitations by statute that we are bound to recognize. But one of the implementation items that, that this chapter is recommending is that we develop in partnership with the expert groups, such as the Cogania Plateau Water Advisory Council to develop a countywide water resources plan. One of the, one of the issues we learned from contacting different communities that having information about water supply and, and programs available is actually something that is in need across the county. So the policies in the water resources plan do talk about that, sharing information. And then the third section in the plan are the diverse communities and services section. And this again recognizes the value that we are inclusive and respect and honor the diversities of our community, people, land and cultures through vibrant communities connected with partnerships and countywide services. The vision statement recognizes that infrastructure, emergency services, public safety and public services are collaboratively built and maintained in partnership with county communities to create a sense of place and reinforce resilience to climate change. And again, the vision that all cultures are valued, respected and preserved crosses across all sections of the plan. In this section, there is the community services and public safety chapter with twelve goals. And the diverse cultures and community character chapter with six goals. Regarding community services and public safety, this has the most goals of any of the chapters. And again, this is a summary of what those goals and policies focus on. It focuses on promoting, promoting opportunities for communities countywide to create community connections and community hubs and gathering places. That was a very important topic we heard during our outreach. For instance, the community center that you just heard about earlier this evening is one of those types of opportunities that communities across the county would like to have. The policies focus on promoting where it's possible a centralized wastewater system. You probably know there are some communities within the county, for instance, Belmont and Donnie Park, Timberline, Fernwood, Kitchinabilles, they have centralized community wastewater systems. Not all of our rural communities have those. So where there's an opportunity, these policies support promoting those. There are policies that support sharing costs of education, infrastructure and bus routes. Now, the county does not specifically provide funding toward this, but there are opportunities for different partnerships. And again, the school district has, has been, has contributed to the policies. But wanting to make sure that this chapter does support education, infrastructure and sharing bus routes across the county, because that is an important way to provide education to our rural communities. The policies focus a lot on preparing for public health emergencies. Health and human services in particular, as you know, provide services countywide. They have, they have vans that go out and provide services across the county. So this plan recognizes those services and strives to help prepare for those different types of events. We talked a bit earlier in a couple of the other chapters about how utilities such as not just electric and gas and those other, those types of standard utilities, but broadband and telecommunications are important to be available for new and existing development. Because they do provide a way for those businesses and also educational facilities to provide needed services to our rural communities. And there is a, a note there that when those new facilities are installed, that they seen equality be considered so that where possible, they are undergrounded. Obviously, recognizing that undergrounding lines are not possible anywhere, but if there's a policy in there that, that supports protecting seen equality. The policies do advocate for planning for adequate emergency services. So our emergency management department and other emergency providers across the county would be supported by this policy. And it does then associated with that advocate for fire adapted communities and possibly considering a county-specific wildland urban interface code. To promoting resilient design within the communities to be resilient to wildfire. There's a policy in there that encourages development to be located away from areas of natural hazards. For instance, fault lines and, and other types of natural hazards that would potentially be issues for new development. And there is a policy then to consider in new development projects, identifying when hazardous materials might be produced or transported in those projects. And then finally, identifying public safety issues and response time and resources that are considered during development proposals. A lot of these, these policies are similar to policies that you look at regularly in your conditional use permit cases. The last chapter is the diverse cultures and community character. And that chapter has been, it's an optional chapter according to what is required for the plan. But the county has had a community character chapter for, since the two thousand and three plan was adopted. And it promotes the rural character, cultural diversity and minimizes scenic impact. The policies also promote those community hubs and connections. They promote protecting and preserving historic and cultural sites. And they promote seeking input from Native American nations to ensure that projects are culturally appropriate and also to incorporate a wide variety of perspectives during public input, during the development review process. So with that, and to help implement the plan, there's an implementation plan. And there are fifty implementation items that are organized into four categories. And we'll start actually at the bottom because there is a list of ongoing action items that are continuously updated. There are seventeen action items there. Some of those are items such as continuously review and update the zoning code to stay current with best practices. So it recognizes that there are these ongoing action items that are, that are continuously implemented by different county departments. Then there are six items that are in the low priority action item. And those are anticipated to be initiated within eight years of plan adoption. So each of these are tiered with a, an idea of initiating in terms of a timeframe. And so the medium priority action items are anticipated to be initiated within a couple, two to four years of plan adoption. And then you'll see in the implementation plan, there is an asterisk. And where those items that are, that have those asterisks are those that the advisory group indicated would have possibly a higher priority. The, the plan is, the implementation plan is numbered, but that is just simply to give the items a number. They are not, it is not numbered in order of number one or two or three priority. And then finally, there are eleven high priority action items. And those would be anticipated to be implemented or initiated within one to two years of plan adoption. And so what I have on the screen are the high priority action items, just to get a sense of what those entail. And so items one through six, and again, these are not necessarily in order of priority. The numbers simply identify the action item because all of these are tied back to a goal or policy. And so the first listed action item is conducting a countywide housing needs assessment that would inform a housing plan. The reason for this is that we know housing is an issue, but plans such as the City of Flagstaff Housing Plan was based on a study. And that is something that would aid the county in understanding what the actual housing needs are, what the vacancy rates are, what the rents are and what the, what the needs for the county in particular are outside of those incorporated areas. The second one listed is to seek funding to develop and implement a countywide multimodal connectivity network master plan. Our public works department has already been working on this. They've, they've written a couple of grant applications and are waiting to hear on the second one to see if this would be something that is, that is, will be successful moving forward. The, the third listed item is where financially feasible, the county will evaluate known safety issues on capital improvement projects and look at countermeasures to prevent further safety issues. This is primarily related to our public works department and new roads projects. Related to that is working with NACOG, which is the Northern Arizona Council of Governments to undertake a regional transportation safety plan. This is actually already ongoing. So some of these we will mark in the plan as being an ongoing or currently initiated study. The fifth one is looking at zoning allowances to explore and support new businesses that are not necessarily currently allowed in the zoning code. The sixth item is supporting forest fuels reduction by looking for disposal methods for the green waste and, and looking for ways to basically help support and address furthering a disposal of that green waste from forest fuels projects. And then the final items on this high priority action plan list would be, one of them, the seventh one would be considering to develop a transfer of development, development rights program and ordinance that would allow density transfers from sending areas to, for instance, the City of Flagstaff and other municipalities within the county. And this would help in preserving working ranches, open space, environmentally sensitive natural areas, et cetera. So that's number seven. The eighth item listed is developing a countywide sustainability and resilience plan, which we talked about a bit. We do have an outline for that could potentially entail, that is in the appendix of the plan. The ninth item listed is coordinating infrastructure, communication infrastructure that creates a respectful tourism culture, including education for visitors and for agencies that bring tourists to the county. The next item is to seek funding and particularly grant assistance to explore the idea of developing a county appropriate WUWE code, the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Because the county has so many different climate regions and different landscapes, it would require very specific work to have a county-specific WUWE code that would, that would apply those different standards across the county, the county regions. And then the last high priority action item is to seek funds to implement recommendations of transportation studies. So these were all supported and these implementation items were proposed by different departments of the county and then the advisory group has looked at these as well.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Are, are you looking for any kind of input on any of these things? Or you want us to hold our questions till the end or what, what is the expectation here?
Vice Chair Wilson, I, I did have a pause at the end of the presentation for questions and discussion. Or we can, if you would prefer a pause here, we could take questions now.
Well, I, I wonder if, if holding questions is going to be difficult considering the, the volume of material that you're presenting here. I, I just don't know what a transfer of development rights or density transfers even are. Can you help me?
I can certainly, yes. Thank, thank you for that question. And so a TDR program is a, would, would be an ordinance that would be wrapped into the zoning code generally. And what it does, it identifies a sending area, for example, a large ranch. And so the part of the work of the ordinance process would be to identify those sending areas. So property owners that are potentially, for example, operating a ranch, that would have development rights, if they're G-zone parcels, would have a certain number of development rights on that property. And then with the ordinance process, and this is where the writing of the ordinance would take time and would take a group to identify receiving areas. And then receiving areas would be generally located in a incorporated town or city. And they would then be open to receiving those development rights. And there would be some sort of incentive or compensation for this transfer of development rights because then if that was then negotiated and agreed to, it could potentially increase the density. And there again would be incentives in the receiving area to increase density. While at the same time, in the sending areas, a contribution easement could be applied so that area was protected. Now, these have been used successfully in other states. I'm not aware.
I, I, I just wanted to understand what the concept was.
Yeah, it's.
Thanks.
Transferring the development rights is, really does kind of sum up how that works.
Got it now. Thank you.
Did you want to hold for other questions at this time?
I'm, who, Commissioner Best?
Well, I have an item on the implementation plan that I would like to move from a low priority to a high priority.
Commissioner Best, we, we have that later in the presentation, if you want to.
If you wanna wait for that kind of comment. Okay, thank you.
We're, we're nearly there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the next, and we're, we're moving right into the comments that we've received on the plan. And so attachment A in your staff report summarized the comments that we've received so far on this public hearing draft. And we did get quite a few comments during the joint work session with the board. We've had two of those. And the, the attachment A summarizes what those are. And that is, I've got two slides or rather several slides that, one slide that shows the comments that were mentioned and the recommendation of no change on these. So, and the rationale for no change based on the comments that we received during the joint work session. I'll make this comment again later, but just so you know, we haven't received any public comments outside of that work session on the public hearing draft. So during the joint work session, there were several comments by the board and commission. Yes, go ahead.
If, if we're not going to recommend a change to the existing plan, do we need to cover not changing something?
I, I just wanted to show the comments that were raised and the recommendation that we don't make changes to these specific comments.
Okay.
There is, the next slide though, does have, there are. There is, the next slide though, does have, there are some recommended changes to specific comments. And the first one is from Commissioner Best, as he was just referring to. And that is regarding implementation item number 25. And you can see, so the Commissioner Best has suggested that we added, we add to that implementation language promoting native plant communities. And so the middle bar, the middle row in this slide, um, shows that implementation item. And then in bold, how it would be modified to add the language and promote native plant communities. The other recommendation from Commissioner Best is to move this. It's currently a medium priority action item to move this to a high priority action item. And I can go through, there are, um, three more slides with recommended changes, um, based on those comments. I can go through those if you like. Uh, number eight there, then again, a comment from the joint work session. Um, and this is related again to the implementation plan. And there was a comment basically to add advocacy for the board to implement the implementation plan. And the suggestion would be that we could add the Board of Supervisors to the header and change who implements and partners. Um, and I'll just go back and show you where that would go. So who implements and partners, we would add here to this very far right column header, um, who implements the partners with the Board of Supervisors. So then they are listed basically throughout the entire implementation plan. Um, there were some additional comments and, um, they related specifically to the recent fires on the North Rim and how the, um, the North Rim Lodge was destroyed by fire and, um, basically supporting for rebuilding the North Rim Lodge quickly. And, um, so something that we, um, so the, the, one of the comments was emphasize the apportement of public lands, the Grand Canyon, the North Rim, bead vendors on 89 to drivers of the economy as support for quickly rebuilding the North Rim Lodge to, to support the economy. And then there was a comment about adding details about significant changes to the economy and demographics since 2015, specifically citing the COVID-19 pandemic, um, the recession, the closure of the Navo Generation Station, ongoing drought and wildfires. And our suggestion would be to include a paragraph in the introduction that emphasized the importance of public land and impacts of major events. And that we included that draft paragraph here for your consideration. And this was in your packet as well. And then this is the final change that was recommended. Um, the, at the joint work session, there was discussion on the, um, note on terminology in the diverse cultures and community chapter, and in the diverse cultures chapter, that focus on how, what terminology is used in the plan, whether it is Native American or Indigenous. And so there was discussion during that work session. And, um, this then would be the recommended, uh, note on terminology that would be included in the plan on specifically on page 149. So, um, and then changes throughout. So these are the, um, the recommended changes, um, based on the comments that we had to date. And then the rest of this presentation is about the approval criteria for, um, this amendment to the comprehensive plan. And we could pause here if you like, or I can just finish the next few slides and then we can go back to your discussion.
Just have one quick question on this slide. When you say recognizing the inherent rights of this pre-existing status, can you give me examples of what those rights are?
From my understanding, based on the conversation that we had during the joint work session, this is something that, um, Indigenous, using Indigenous terminology, recognizing people that lived here in this area before European contact. So it's recognizing that those people, um, basically had their, that, that pre-existing status gives inherent rights to be acknowledged. I don't think that it implies anything specific or above in terms of land use. It doesn't really affect land use decisions, but it recognizes that this document is, um, respecting and honoring that Indigenous is a term that reflects this pre-existing status.
I, I, I guess when I read the word rights, I, I believe that it references specifics typically that are enumerated clearly. And so maybe that's not the case here. I guess we can move on unless any other commissioners have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The, um, the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance does list these approval criteria when you are adopting a major amendment to the plan. And, um, some of these are not applicable. Uh, number, uh, rather, letter F and H are not applicable because it's regarding specific properties or sites. Um, the rest of these, that the amendment constitutes an overall improvement to the county, that the amendment does not adversely impact a portion of the county or the existing character, that the amendment is supported by our vision for the future and other goals and policies of the plan, that the requested change, change benefits the county or a specific community, that conditions have changed substantially since the last update, and that the amendment effectively helps implement the plan's other goals or vision. This update then basically exceeds all of these requirements by a complete update to the comprehensive plan. And, um, just so you know then, that if this plan then is adopted, then it will supersede the existing plan. The comprehensive plan advisory group, they convened on Au- August 7th, and they reviewed the 60-day review comments. And the public hearing draft that you've seen does reflect their recommenda- recommendation for approval of this. Um, and as I mentioned, we have not received any additional public comments on this particular case uh, since the report was prepared. And then this would be a recommended motion that the planning commission modify Invision 2045 with the changes suggested in attachment A, the summary table of recommended changes to the public hearing draft, and recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt PZAM 25001, the updated Coquettino County Comprehensive Plan. And now, uh, Vice Chair Wilson, this is back to you for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Commissioner Walsh?
Um, thank you, Melissa, for your presentation and all of your hard work on this, uh, Invision 2045. As you may recall, back in about '09, we worked on a multimodal transportation plan um, that I think has been shelved. Is that transportation, uh, plan going to be resurrected? Or is a new study on transportation needs, um, being proposed by this comprehensive plan?
Commissioner Walsh, can I ask a clarifying question? Are you referring to the Doni Park multimodal, uh, plan, that study that was conducted, um, in 2009?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. Um, so that plan, um, was evaluated again during the update to the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan. And, um, that would then be, so that, some changes to that were actually recognized in that area plan update. And so that area plan is fairly new. And this countywide multimodal, um, study would take into account all of those new change conditions, including what is in the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan. So that study in and of a sense, in and of itself was somewhat outdated. Um, but that Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan process did look at change conditions and made some recommendations in that way. So I guess the long and short of your, your, um, the answer to your question is that that plan itself does now have some outdated information in it, but the new countywide multimodal study would, would refresh it, but on a bigger level and a bit bigger geography.
Okay, thank you.
Wish your best.
Thank you. So, uh, Ms. Shaw, I would like to discuss changing something. Is that okay? What, what is our plan here?
This is your public hearing for this item. If there are comments or recommendations, then that is for the commission to discuss.
Okay, well, if.
Um, Commissioner Best, if I could interrupt for just a moment, I think what we were, we were asking questions of staff. Our next step would normally be to open it to public comment. And then we would go to commission. So if you will allow me once again, interrupt you today and, um, pause for one second. We will open the floor first for public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this plan, I'd like to ask you to raise your hand and be identified. Okay, I'm seeing none. So Commissioner Best, I apologize for the interruption. Please continue. Oh, good.
You're doing a great job, actually. Um. It was great to hear from Ms. Simmons about wildlife earlier this evening because it outlined the comprehensive information and history and expertise we have about wildlife. In every survey of people, uh, about what they want out of their lives in Northern Arizona, the environment is pretty much at the top of the list. The environment is the landforms, the plants and the animals. And we don't have anything like Arizona game and fish in the world of plants. And we do have some pressing challenges. Uh, one of those, and, and I kind of look at it from both sides. We have plants we don't want that threaten our environment seriously. And we have plants we want, and we want to make sure that we keep them, uh, given the challenges ahead of us, uh, of our overuse of the environment with the logging and overgrazing in the history of our area and also climate change. So I have proposed that we move, uh, so over the years, we have had uncoordinated, efforts to deal with invasive plants. I think we're in pretty good shape in a way. I think most of our invasive plants are not running wild yet. Uh, we've, we're seeing some, uh, increases in certain plants, like diffuse napwe really has taken off in the last few years. But I think it's treatable. There are areas, uh, north of us in the Great Basin with millions upon millions of acres of cheat grass. There are, uh, areas to the south of us in the Sonoran Desert with hundreds of thousands of acres cumulative of fires caused by buffalo grass. So, uh, invasive plants can change the world. We want to get ahead of it. And so I have suggested, uh, I, that we move item number seven in the response to comments, which is coordinating native plant uh, programs across all jurisdictions to the high priority list. There has been over the years, something called the San Francisco Peaks Weed Management Area. It has been, uh, in and out of many institutions. Um, the, uh, University of Arizona Extension, the Arboretum, uh, other institutions, I can't even remember. I've been involved with it for over 25 years. Uh, it ended up with the Conservation Study Forum, a volunteer group. And I actually called the last few meetings in 2021, and then it died with COVID. But it was pretty effective because it goes across all jurisdictions and, and common sense tells you without an effort across all jurisdictions, you're kind of wasting your time. But that's very hard to put together. And so I'm suggesting that we move forward on that, uh, as a top priority. And I have here before me, uh, page 712 of the proposed regional plan, a high priority action item, which is pretty much the same language as our, uh, invasive plant management plan, coordinate invasive weed, coordinate invasive plant plans, programs and resources with regional, state, tribal, dot, dot, dot. It's pretty much the same. And they are saying it's a high priority action item. I agree. I think it is very much a part of, uh, the high priority action item in our plan already, and that is the, uh, support forest fuels reduction efforts by identifying disposal methods and so on. As we go out into the forest, we take seeds with us. If we have invasive plant infestations around Flagstaff and in the populated area, as workers and equipment go out, regardless of whatever program, uh, they're under, they're going to take those seeds out. And I've had two, uh, iterations of, of forest stewardship within a mile of my house. Uh, there was no follow-up to take out the weeds. And I've spent hundreds of hours out there myself doing it. We really need to get in front of this before we go from sort of nuisance scale to landscape scale. Once you're landscape scale, honestly, nobody knows what to do. Um, so that's why I am, I am encouraging us to make, um, item 25 in the implementation plan into an item eight or nine to work, uh, with the city who is ready to go as a top-level implementation and, uh, work with all of our other partners. Um, obviously, the, the city is our closest partner. Uh, but over the years in the San Francisco Peaks Weed Management Area, we did put together pretty much everybody, the Forest Service, the state. Uh, don't know that we had tribal representatives. Uh, we had private institutions, NAU, the Museum of Northern Arizona. Uh, it was a good group that we put together, but unfortunately, without a home, an institutional home, we never even approached what game and fish can do, keeping maps and research and, and a big picture plan together over the years and the decades. So, um.
Commissioner Best, I know you suggested, um, a specific item be changed. I'm hoping Ms. Shaw could pull that up so we can see what it's specifically, what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's item 25 right now. She can pull that up, I'm sure.
And Vice Chair Wilson, Commissioner Best, it's on the screen.
Oh, yeah, it's the, oh, yeah.
Uh, so, yeah. Mm-hmm. It's, it's, this is item 25, the middle row, um, the exact language. And then with the suggestion in bold at the bottom, um, that Commissioner Best has added additional text to. And then, um, I can show you the implementation plan as, if you'd like to see where that actually.
So have, have we agreed that we are going to make this change?
Well, let, let me say that, let me say about the, the, the words that they agreed to put in and promote native plant communities. Uh, another thing that I think is important is to look at plants the way game and fish looks at wildlife. Look at everything, not just what you don't want, but what you do want. And so when we do that, we bring into the conversation, um, not just people going after invasive weeds, but, you know, research from NAU, from the Museum of Northern Arizona, from the Botanical Association, from Master Gardeners. We bring in a lot more expertise and a lot more volunteers to take a big picture look at plants. And of course, the immediate threat is invasive plants, and we focus on that. But we also look to the future as game and fish does, um, trying to get that holistic point of view. So there's item 25, which is two to four years out. And what I'm suggesting is, uh, parallel what the city is doing, which is pretty much the same item, and make it, uh, a high priority and try to get.
So without any objection, I don't under, I, I believe we should be able to do that this evening, right, Ms. Shaw?
I have my hand up. I have an objection.
Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hayward.
Um, yeah, I don't think this is a, this should even be on the list, let alone a high priority. I think we have important things to worry about, and weeds is not one of them. You know, I'm, I'm sitting here, you know, while my wife is putting the kids down in the other room all by herself and listening to Commissioner Best talk about this again for the umpteenth time. I really would, you know, urge you to have a little bit of respect for the for how much interest that your fellow commissioners might share in something that you are very passionate about. It's obvious that you are very passionate about it. You know, you've made this comment at every public meeting that I've been at. It's got into the document. I personally don't think it should be in the document at all. And I, I'm I'm opposed to moving it up in terms of priorities. I think we have, we have actual priorities. And to be honest, I'd really just like to stop talking about it. I get it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayward.
On, on page six of our comprehensive plan, as proposed is the quote by Aldo Leopold. And it basically says that the natural world should be part of our community. And I think that's a lot of the basis of our entire plan. If you think back a hundred and fifty years ago to the loggers and and the cattlemen, the sheep ranchers. If they had taken into account more carefully the land, the land ethic, we would not be where we are today, looking at millions of acres of forest that we have no idea how to make safe. We would not be looking at massive wildfires, taking out hundreds of acres, hundreds of thousands of acres at a time and destroying property. And that is where we are with our plants. We can focus, you know, we're humans, and we tend to focus on our housing and our jobs and our roads. And that's all well. But we live in an environment made up of animals, plants and landforms, which we all treasure. We can look around to the north of us, to the south of us, to see what happens when you ignore invasive plants. It's not a pretty picture. It's doable now. And the reason I'm passionate about it is if we keep putting it off, it gets to the level where it's not doable. And so that's why I suggest we make it a priority. The city is making it a priority. I think putting together a city and county group and getting back with bringing in all jurisdiction is the answer. We've done it before. There's a lot of people out there working on it. But we don't have the coordination that we, that we need.
So, Mr. Best, I, I think that we all understand your objective here with this particular request of increasing the priority of this particular items, right?
That's good. Yeah, that's simply it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other commissioners have any inputs on the presentation from Ms. Shaw? Seeing none? Okay. So Ms. Shaw has drafted a specific recommended motion. Is there a reason why this time it has to be these specific words, Ms. Shaw?
Well, this would be a recommend a motion if the commission decides to refer this on to the board. So this would be.
But that are these words required? Or, you know, this is the only time we've actually been required or provided a motion.
It's to remind, just to remind the commission that there are suggested change, changes in that attachment A. And that was attached to your staff report. So those are not reflected in the actual public hearing draft. So this is this is just a suggestion for how your motion could read. You could adopt a motion as you see fit. Thank you.
Which was included in the, well, Attachment A is included in our packet today.
That, that's right.
So we haven't been able to review that. And Commissioner Best's recommendation is not reflected in the document that currently, is that correct?
Commissioner Best's recommendation, part of his recommendation is reflected in that attachment A. And that is to add the language and promote native plant communities.
Okay.
His, his suggestion to move that to high priority is not included in Attachment A.
Okay. Now we understand where we are and what we're doing. And if no other commissioners have any comments, I will entertain a motion to move forward on this.
Vice Chair, I'll make a motion that we modify envision twenty forty five with changes suggested in attachment A, summary table of recommended changes to the public hearing draft, and recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt PZ AM twenty five dash zero zero one, the updated Coquenino County Comprehensive Plan.
I second that motion.
And that was Commissioner Walsh. Thank you, Commissioner Walsh. I have received a motion from Commissioner Hayward, a second from Commissioner Walsh to approve via the recommended motion in the presentation, and I will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Togi?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Berger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
I vote aye. The motion passes. And that wraps up the agendized items for today and leaves us at any public comment. If there is anyone from the public that has something that they would like to share not related to the items on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Seeing none at eight zero nine, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for participating this evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.